My name is Troya Elise McCorkle and I am a 2014 graduate of Frederick Douglass High School. I was the valedictorian of this year's graduating class with a cumulative GPA of a 4.2. I have received various awards, including the CEO award. I was also a starter of three varsity sports, all four years of high school. This led to me receiving not only the Female Scholar-Athlete of the Year Award, but also the Female Athlete of the Year Award. I have participated in many service activities, including feeding the homeless with my church and running a dance camp for two years. I also served as President of the National Honor Society this past year and Vice President the prior year. I will be attending the University of Maryland College Park in the fall, where I will be majoring in early childhood education. After obtaining my bachelor's degree, I wish to receive my master's degree and start my own daycare business. I am a proud Frederick Douglass High School graduate and I am ready for college. Now, I want to welcome you to the June 26 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting. Highlights this evening will include a news break titled "Embracing Common Core." Additionally, the Board of Education will discuss summer CIP projects and decide on the naming of the new Hyattsville area elementary school, Edward M. Felge Elementary School. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the June 26 Board of Education meeting will begin.
Thank you. What a wonderful job. It is just so wonderful to see these young people who are coming after my job and they're coming in a hurry. Good job. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the June 26, 2014 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I'd like to remind folks to please pull out your cell phones and either turn them off or put them on silent. Ms. Boston, would you please lead us in the Board Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh God, you pray to a minister that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Mrs. Berkeley, would you please call the role?
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Epps?
Present.
Ms. Eubanks?
Present.
Ms. Higgins?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Here.
Dr. Kaufman?
Ms. Monday?
Happy to be here.
Mr. Valenzuela?
I'm here.
Ms. Waller?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Muse Aria?
Present.
Ms. Boston?
Present.
Dr. Eubanks?
Present.
All right, thank you colleagues. It's great to have a full house for the last Board Meeting of the year. So can we go to you, to the adoption of the agenda? Higgins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we move up public comments on non-agenda items, item number 12.1, and have it become 4.2 after public comment on agenda items.
It has been moved and seconded to move up public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, that motion carries. Ms. Jacobs, you got an agenda item?
Thank you. I move to have all speakers who have registered for tonight, all 26 speakers be allowed to speak, to extend the timelines for public speaking.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to extend the timeline for public speaking so that all public speakers registered may speak. And it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Please note to colleagues that oral arguments has been canceled and removed from the agenda. So I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have a motion to approve the June 12, 2014 Board Meeting minutes? It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 12, 2014 Board Meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, that motion carries. Wonderful. Now, item 3.6, News Break: Embracing the Common Core.
I am so proud to be here to welcome you to our first annual Common Core Conference.
She starred in the promo for the event and then, there she was! First grader Gabrielle Colbreth at the podium of Northwestern High School to welcome over 9,000 teachers at nine different sites to a day of training on the Common Core and digital literacy. It was a big assignment for a little girl who knew a lot was at stake.
What did you do out there today? Because everybody really liked you. What did you do?
I focused and concentrated and I tried my best not to mess up.
Gabrielle's simple words were the perfect motto for a day devoted to clarifying a revolutionary new approach to education that is being rolled out and piloted simultaneously in over 40 states with the hope that no one messes up because the stakes are so high. So, to be sure that all Prince George's County teachers are on the same page with the Common Core, the county and its partner, Discovery Education, invited Sandra Alberti, a national spokesperson for the Common Core, and a host of professional development specialists to debunk some of the Core's myths and confirm some of the program's key directives.
But make no mistake about it, this is the new floor, not the ceiling, of what we want for our kids. This is what it means to be college and career-ready in math and in literacy, and that's what we want for all kids. But if your kids are performing there and they're exceeding there, this is not about slowing anybody down, this is about raising everybody up. Here are the things that we really think matter most for kids. You don't have to guess at what those things are. You don't have to try to figure out what those things are. We're now starting with what we've always dreamed of as education, which is somebody telling us first, what can you put off your plate so that you really have the energy, the time, to focus on what matters most for kids? And at its heart, that is what this is about.
Yeah, we've been writing curriculum to the Common Core standards for several years now. It's been being, you know, delivered, I guess if you will, in our new curriculum documents. But people just haven't had time to spend with it. You know, they get it, they teach the lessons around it, but they don't have that deep fundamental understanding of the Core standards.
Apprising the teachers of shifts in literacy and math that include focusing on fewer math skills, building more knowledge through nonfiction, and gathering evidence from text, Alberti acknowledged there is a learning curve and challenges ahead for everybody.
I think we're still in the process of convincing people. There's a lot of noise from left and right about how bad the Common Core is. But most educational leaders across the country aren't against the Common Core. They've been questioning the speed of implementation and there's logistical problems.
Healthy skepticism aside, the teachers and principals in the day's workshops on topics like new writing approaches and purposeful assessments were encouraged by the reform, their role as pioneers, and the program's ultimate goal of college and career readiness. How's Common Core been for you?
Oh, excellent. We implemented it first in the state of Maryland. We've been doing well with our 10 standards and will continue.
The word that comes to mind for me is autonomy. Autonomy, there's a level of trust put into this. And she did mention something that I think a lot of us need to take note of: hard work. It can be easier to take that program that's been scripted and written for you and just teach to it. That is not what Common Core standards, to me, is about.
I think that it got us all to understand the standards and what they mean and what it is we're supposed to be teaching and why it is that we are doing this.
In the 70s, we were ready to go to college. I think now we need to go back. We're evolving, back ready, ready for college.
Common Core's final report card may be years away, but for students like Jory Holmes, one of the well-dressed MCs at the big event, the new standards already get a big thumbs up.
And I was so confused. And I was like, why aren't we reading like the stuff that we used to read? And they're like, well, it's a new part of the new Common Core system. So we started reading more books, but I kind of liked it still because I got to learn more and like stopped reading, you know, fiction books where it's just like basically like a cartoon. And I got to learn more non-fiction books and I got to learn and I really took in that information with me. And so then I go home and tell my mom, like, "Mom, I learned something new today, dah 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 dah", and I tell her about it and I feel so happy and smart and yeah, it was fun.
With that kind of endorsement and Gabrielle's personal formula for success, the odds are good that Common Core won't be messing up anytime soon.
How am I being prepared now to be college and career-ready?
Did you do homework?
I don't study, but I do work hard.
Hard work and the Common Core going together for the betterment of everyone in the Prince George's County Public Schools. For Channels 96 and 38, this is Dave Zirin.
Thank you for that wonderful report. Folks, what that video didn't tell you is just how much work and time and effort it took to put together a conference for 9,000 teachers in about 60 days. Is that me? Yes, that's me. And what a tremendous effort it was and thanks to Dr. Maxwell and his team, but also a special thanks to my colleagues at Prince George's County Education Association. Lou and Teresa Dudley are here today and Ken Haynes, who really led some tremendous leadership in getting that work done. Thank you so much for that. All right, folks, that's news break. Before I go into my chair's report, I have several very special points of personal privilege to offer to you today. The first is, we have so many talented students. You heard from the young lady earlier. And I have one right here to my left, another person heading to the University of Maryland College Park, our student chair, Ruqaiet Muse Aria, and she is going to share with us her reflections in the year that she has spent with us as student chair. Ladies and gentlemen, please give Ruqaiet a big round of applause. You gonna stand up? All right, you need a mic? Oh, you're going to the podium? Am I right?
Hello, everybody. Good evening. For those of you who do not know, my name is Ruqaiet Muse Aria and I'm the student member of the Board of Education for Prince George's County. So my report just gives an overall review of what I was able to do during my term as student member of the Board of Education. Okay, adventures as student member of the Board. Being small, but I was able to page out Annapolis, Maryland. I was able to attend Magnolia Elementary School's induction ceremony, SGA induction ceremony. I was able to go to Charles Carroll Middle School and participate in the Career Day and talk to the middle school students about my job as being student member of the Board. And most importantly, I was able to speak at the annual Girl Scout Conference in Washington DC and talk about my role as student member of the Board. So what have I done? This year, I was able to start the CEO Advisory Council. It was a startup. It was a little bit rough, but we were able to meet two times this school year. And the group consisted of a charter school student, a middle school student, high school students, and an evening school student. So this council allows students to talk with the CEO, Dr. Maxwell, and voice their concerns that they have about the school system and also talk about the positives in the school system. So this was a great council that was able to be established and hopefully next year, the new student member of the Board, Jeffrey, can continue this program. Another program I was, I'm starting to reintroduce is Driver's Education. So my, so this year, I wanted to reintroduce this course. The last time we had this course was around 1980s. So the purpose was to teach students how to drive a vehicle and obtain their provisional license. And the main purpose is, right now, driving school ranges from $300 to $350. So I'm hoping to reduce this price by allowing driving schools to teach their courses in our schools. But hopefully, this will be implemented by the second semester, but it's still in the works. Another event I was able to do was a partnership with Oxon Hills Student Government Association. And I was able to partner with them with their Peace Summit. So their Peace Summit allows, it's an event where they bring, they invite all middle school students across the county and they talk about different things like drug awareness or teen domestic abuse or peer pressure and et cetera. The Peace Summit had a great turnout and it was a successful event and I felt honored that I was able to partner with such a wonderful school, SGA. Another thing I was able to do this year was convention sponsorship. So convention is hosted by MASCE. For those of you who do not know, MASCE is like the SGA of the school, I mean of the state. So every year, they go to Ocean City and they teach students about how to be a leader and there's different workshops. So this year, I was able to sponsor eight students. I was able to sponsor six students to go to this convention for those who cannot pay for it because you have to actually pay the tuition rate. So I was able to sponsor one Flowers High School student, one Parkdale High School student, and four Sutland High School students. School visits. This, another thing I was able to do this year was school visits. So I got to meet with different students from various schools and I held a discussion about the school system. I was able to meet with Paint Branch Elementary School, Perrywood Elementary School, William Worth Middle School, and Samuel Ogo Middle School. And I was also able to meet with Sutland High School. And I have several pictures. I have one with my old principal of my old elementary school, Ms. Jones, at the top. Acknowledgements. First, I would like to thank all Prince George's County students for all their support that I received during my term. I would also like to thank the P-Gross Executive Board for the enlightening discussion we had. Next, I'd like to thank my mother and father. Will you please stand? For all the knowledge they have installed in me and all the love they have shown me. I would also like to thank my three other brothers for being my role models and Mr. Edo and Mr. Bassi, who can please stand too. For the support they have shown me. Then I would like to thank Ms. Avora Washington for always speaking the truth. In addition, I would like to thank my fellow Board members and the 18,000 staff members within the county for being my secondary family. And I would also like to thank the Board staff for assisting me throughout this whole process and always having a response to my emails. Lastly, I would like to thank Mr. Moody. Will you please stand? For the guidance that he has given me during my term and for being the greatest mentor I could ask for and for always being there for support, to support all my endeavors. Future plans. I plan to remain a student advocate as I attend University of Maryland College Park, go Terps, and pursue a career in chemical engineering. Goodbye and farewell.
Thank you so much, Ms. Muse Aria, for your tremendous and dedicated and talented service that you provided us this year. I know that your advocacy will continue and we look forward to you making your rapid rise to be President of the University of Maryland College Park by probably junior year at most. All right, folks, a couple more opportunities to again give points of personal privilege to acknowledge some great work. I will turn the floor over to my Vice Chair, Carolyn Boston.
Thank you. At the end of our last Board Meeting for the end of the school year, we have some more outstanding students that we want to recognize for the great accomplishments they've done this year. So along with the President of the NAACP, Mr. Bob Ross, could you please step up to the podium so you can help me recognize the students?
I'll let out my advisor, Doris, talking about the program. She's got a great, great job with this.
Okay. So, AXO, which stands for Academic Cultural Technological Scientific Olympics, is a competition for high school students with 27 categories that fall under the sciences, humanities, business, visual arts, and performing arts. It's a year-long enrichment program where we partner students with mentors at least twice a month, where they work with their mentors and build on their projects. And then in April, we have a local competition. The students win either bronze, silver, or gold medals. The gold medalists then advance to the national competition to compete against over 2,500 students from around the nation in these categories. And at the national competition, the bronze medalist wins $1,000, the silver wins $1,500, the gold wins $2,000, and all of them, all of the medalists win laptops. This year, the competition, the national competition is taking place in Las Vegas, Nevada, and we're taking 12 students representing Prince George's County. This is the second year this program is being implemented in Prince George's County, but the program nationally is 36 years old. Maya Alexander. Jordan Washington. Malcolm Mailard. Inikachi Aburu. Olufasayo Quadri. Alfred Double D III. Sterling Harrell. And Marcus Gurley.
And Dora had done such a wonderful job. She has six children of her own and she gives up her time to work to have the program. This year, the 12 categories, I am really excited. We have a filmmaker going, you have a classical piano going, you have an opera singer going, you got a business entrepreneur going, you have an actor going, architect, what else? That's the talent that you have going. Painting, drawing, and sculpture. So we're excited and we expect to bring back some gold. And I thank you for allowing us to work with your students and to continue this partnership for next year, we go to Philadelphia and we're looking to full all 27 categories. Thank you.
And I want to thank the Board for indulging us in this, so thank you.
Thank you for that great work. It is so important to acknowledge and support our talented young people. And finally, let me offer a point of personal privilege to my colleague, Sabrina Epps.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. I just wanted to extend greetings to Delegate Barbara Fresh of District 21. I appreciate her for coming out and advocating as she does so diligently and has been for so many years. Thank you so much for coming. And also to High Point High School Principal Sandra Jimenez, thank you so much for all you do. And you know, High Point's graduation was awesome this year and they're going to go out and do great things, so thank you for all your hard work.
All right, thank you, folks. We'll now move on to the report of the Chair. Just a couple of quick notes. The Prince George's County Board of Education Foundation's Fourth Annual Golfing for Education Tournament was held last week at the Country Club at Woodmore. This spectacular event was comprised of a fun-filled day of golf and socializing. The proceeds will support education-related programs benefiting the Prince George's County Public Schools Excellence in Education Foundation. Following the event, we saw just a powerful video montage of the talented students who receive scholarships through this tremendous work. It was a great event. I myself participated as a golfer and will make it my personal business to give my CEO enough golf training between now and next year to actually get him out on the course with us.
Zero. Wow, I thought those four was good.
Yeah, right. So it was a great event and I want to just especially thank the funders. You know, we raised, our goal was to exceed last year's fundraising goal and I think we did that thanks to the support of some great partners and some great, and some great funders. So again, when you see that come around next year, please, please do join us. Also, you've heard from her, but I want to also just officially acknowledge and extend farewell wishes to Ms. Muse, Ruqaiet Muse Aria as she closes out her term as student Board Member for the 2013-14 school year. You know, it is so critically important to have the voice of students at the table with us. And Ms. Muse Aria certainly kind of kept it real for us when it was necessary to really remind us just what students are concerned about in schools and what our job is really all about. So thank you again for your tremendous service. And let's see, upcoming events. Please be advised that we, the Board will begin its six-week recess on July 1, 2014. I learned last year as Chair that what our official six-week recess means is we only have about 70% of the number of meetings we normally have during that six-week period. So this recess thing is pretty mysterious, but we will certainly be working during that time, but hopefully take a little bit of time off. Speaking of which, in the middle of that, on August 13, 2014, at 5:00 PM, we will have our CIP Fab Committee Meeting. And our next official Board Meeting will be on August 28, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Both of those meetings will be held right here in the SASSA Building. Of course, if you're interested in speaking at the meeting, please register with the Board of Education two and a half hours prior to the meeting. Board of Education two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-925-6115. That concludes my chair's remarks, and I would now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for his CEO's report.
Thank, thank you very much, Dr. Eubanks, and good evening, everyone. I want to begin by also thanking and congratulating Ru. It's been a great year, and I appreciate your efforts with the student advisory and with the other conversations that we've had about possible programmatic changes, so thank you and good luck at, at Maryland. It's a great place, and I'm sure you'll fit in well. I hope you won't be a stranger. While this year has officially come to an end, I want to make sure everybody is aware that that doesn't mean that we shut down for the summer. Dr. Eubanks has already talked about the meetings the board will be having. This time of year is full of professional development, our planning for next year and summer programs for students. The majority of summer enrichment programs begin on Monday, June 30. More than 6,000 students will engage in summer enrichment activities, including credit recovery, algebra, geometry, and reading programs, literacy support for second graders, second graders, and creative arts STEM and special education programs. In addition, summer activity calendars and summer reading lists for students are available on our website. You already saw a news break about the professional development on Common Core and Technology Education in partnership with Discovery Education and PGCEA. I also want to acknowledge Gladys Whitehead and Sean Joseph for the Omen's effort that they had pulling together all the different pieces of our school district, and I'd just like to acknowledge them. I know Gladys is here, and Sean is sitting right here. Could you stand, Gladys and Sean? For the, for the past, by the way, I really loved working with Gabrielle. She was just awesome. Student who did the advertisement and then spoke and helped you, Dr. Eubanks, with your remarks as well. She was awesome. So, but for the past three days, my team and I have been working with our principals at the Summer Leadership Institute, where they too participated in workshops on collaboration and communication, use of data for school improvement and planning, the framework for teaching and performance management, including Teachcape, and the institute also allowed important time for reflection and networking. During that institute, we unveiled our new school system logo that incorporates the elements of Great By Choice, our focus on teaching and learning, and our goal of outstanding academic achievement for all students. The new logo will be incorporated into our website and publications throughout the summer. As we enter into the summer season, I encourage our parents and students to stay focused and engage in activities that will foster success in school, and please come visit us at the Back to School Fair, August 9, from 10 to 1 at the Showplace Arena in Upper Marlborough. I know this is something you may not be thinking of right now, but the first day of school for all students is Tuesday, August 26. We have a new systemic orientation day planned for sixth and ninth graders on Monday, August 25, to help students transition to Millin High School. Have a great summer.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. We're now on to item 4.0, public comment on agenda items, and as noted, we will have comment on both agenda and non-agenda items at this time. Before I begin, just a quick note about the guidelines. You've been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, not to address folks individually, but use our titles. And please have a copy of your statement and put it in the box located next to the microphone. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. I will note, again, we made a revision to the agenda to make sure that everyone wishing to speak can do so. We have 26 folks registered today, so I will ask for strict adherence to the guidelines to make sure that we get through this smoothly and we can listen to everything you have to share with us. We will start with public comments on agenda items. Item 10.8, approval of High Point High School feasibility study. We have three registered speakers. The first is Delegate Barbara Fresh, Maryland House of Delegates, District 21. Delegate Fresh.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Dr. Maxwell, Board of Education, thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. I am here representing the 21st District of Prince George's County and Anarondle County, Delegate Penya Melnick, Delegate Barnes, and Senator Rosa Pepp, and myself. What I say is what they also believe in. I'll be brief, and I'll be to the point. I am appreciative that you are here, and it's an honor to speak to you. I'm here tonight to request that you place the replacement of High Point High School in the CIP budget. High Point High School is 60 years old this fall, 60 years old. It has, it has been in dilapidation for quite some time. For those of you who have visited High Point High School, you are aware that it looks like a third-world country. The windows are rusted out, there are buckets to retrieve water that leak into the classrooms and hallways, and there is asbestos in the ceilings. We've had some of that removed, I'm not sure it's all gone, but it still needs to be replaced. This is outrageous and shameful. Our children deserve better. Thank you very much for allowing me the privilege to come before you, and beg you, please, please, put High Point High School in the CIP. Number one would be great, but settle for two or three, but thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. As public comment goes, we can't do that at this time, but we thank you so much for your time. Thank you. Our next speaker on this topic is Karen Coakley, Chair, High Point Feasibility Study, and President of Beltsville Citizens Association.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. Dr. Maxwell, School Board Rep for the District One area, Sabrina Epps, thank you, and to the other school board members. First of all, ditto to everything Delegate Fresh just said. When we first started this process, before we even had the money in the feasibility study, Dr. LeVere, whose name I always mispronounce, but from, with the state, came out and met with us, and when I was standing in the lobby at High Point, he said to me, "Ms. Coakley, do you know how horrible the school looks on the outside?" And I looked at him, and I said, "Peeling paint is the least of my concerns." You know, but I agree with Delegate Fresh, it does look like a third-world country. Before I go on any further, I want you to know, though, that with me tonight, I'm not just speaking for me, there are representatives from the Beltsville, Calverton, Vansville communities, we have representatives from the business community, and more importantly, most importantly, we have students and teachers who try to learn and teach at High Point. They're with me here also tonight. As, you know, High Point does, it turns 60 this fall, and if High Point was a person, it would be looking at a facelift, a hip replacement, eye jobs, knee replacements, probably put in a pacemaker, but it's a building, and as a building, it's a money pit. You can, you cannot continue to put Band-Aids, because every time, and, and yes, you got, the school system has come out, and they've put a Band-Aid here, but, you know, they put a Band-Aid, you know, here, and, well, this artery, you know, bursts over on the right arm, or what have you. You cannot continue to put Band-Aids on this school. The feasibility study group looked at different options, and the one that we can, we chose was to get rid of the existing school and keep the auditorium. Every, you know, and, and that's what we're asking you to do. In coming years, High Point will be offering exciting academy programs, but again, the school is not equipped to deal with the academy programs that are coming into that school. You know, you have one outlets in some of the classrooms, or one or two outlets, it just, it cannot, you know, the students cannot learn when they don't have the necessities to learn with, with what we're teaching them in today's... I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I'm, I'm blowing this, but I'm, I'm just going to summarize it. My students, my wonderful students of a multitude of nationalities, they deserve a new school. By the way, folks, I have never had a child in any of the schools, but my kids, their time has come, they have waited, they have been patient. High Point is the only high school that has never been renovated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coakley. Our next speaker is Tom Alward, the Vice President of Greater Beltsville Business Association.
Good evening, and it's nice to be before you again. I've got basically three points. You've heard most of them, but I want to highlight them. We now have a feasibility study that says it's time. All the students and teachers have said, "It's time." The business community says it's time. It's right at the gateway of the county. It doesn't look good, and it doesn't help our reputation and our ability to attract businesses. The key thing we need to have is a strong educational system with good, solid facilities in which they can perform. That's point number one. The second thing is, building a new high school is a major task. Every one of us have faced major tasks. The first thing you have to do is take the first step. You can't go anywhere until you take the first step. That's been done, the feasibility has been done, now it's time to put money behind it, and it's important to do it soon. And that's my third point. Please, find a way to put money in FY 2015. Let's get the project started. We all know it's time. We all know it's necessary, and we all know it's a tremendous investment in the future of our county. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next agenda item for public speaking is 11.1, Board Policy 5115, Student Appeals of Extended Expulsion, Suspensions and Expulsions. David Kahn, co-chair, Citizens for an Elected Board.
Thank you. Before I start, I want to take a moment to congratulate and thank Board Member Rucait Muse Ario for her exemplary service, not just to the board, but also to the students of Prince George's County and the people of Prince George's County. We have been very well-served by her presence here on the board, and I think that she gets a scholarship for that, too, for which congratulations are also in order. I'm looking forward to the service of Jeffrey Taylor. By law, his term starts on the last day of school, which is the 30th of June, this Monday. I hope you will see that he has sworn in, so we don't lose his services for all those important things you're doing this summer. Former student members have been sworn in in late August. We need his service from the first day that his term starts by law. And now on to why I'm speaking here today, and you can start that clock. This board policy is necessary. It's required by law that you make some changes, and that's all good, but there are problems in here. One, it says it's a student appeals policy, but there are positive mandates that permit the actual suspensions and expulsions. So if, maybe there's another policy that speaks to that, but I thought the state wanted us to look for alternatives to suspensions so that these students, even if they're difficult students, can continue to learn. In any case, I don't see that here, maybe it's somewhere else. I'm concerned also that for the removal for less than 10 days, and even more important, the removal for 10 days or more, there is a lack of due process, and that should be of concern, because if we get sued, it could be very expensive for the district to litigate and perhaps pay money judgments. It's particularly important for the 10 days or more. I don't know how much time I'll have, but I'll run through them quickly. You'll notice an in-school suspension, there, the student at least is given a chance to tell his or her side of the story before the suspension starts. That's good, but it doesn't appear anywhere else. In removal for less than 10 days, the conference is during the suspension period, when the kid is out of school. Now, what if after the conference, the principal finds, "Hey, this kid didn't deserve to be suspended, he's already missed school." That's not good. And then they permit the charges to be given to the parents at the conference, so they have no chance to prepare any of their side of the story. It doesn't have to be done in advance. Now, a student whose presence poses a continuing danger, of course, may be removed immediately, but only if notice and conference required is provided as soon as possible. You can't provide something that happens afterwards as a condition of him being removed. If somebody is disruptive, that person needs to be removed, and then there needs to be a positive requirement that that conference be held. Most important is the 10 days or more. The, there appears that there, if the person poses a threat, there is no conference, and that's the way the word, the wording seems to read. If I'm right about that, that needs to be fixed. It says, "Have a conference by the 10th day unless the chief executive officer determines that it'll pose a threat." So if it poses a threat, we're in trouble. And there are two others, and I see my time is up, but I'd be happy to talk to council about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is on item 13.1, Board Policy 5132, Cell Phones and Other Electronic Devices in Schools. Thea Scarrato.
Hi, thank you. I'm here, I looked over Board Policy 5132, and I wanted to add that it needs to include best practices for wireless devices that incorporate the health issues. All independent research that looked at over 10 years of use of cell phones, every single bit of research, 30 minutes a day, over 10 years, showed increased cancer, four to five times in adults who started as teens. So this is an opportunity to teach children how to use these devices more intelligently, and as you, as I mentioned before, several World Health Organization doctors are calling for precautions, and I'd like to quote Darius Lazzinski, he has two doctorates, and he says, "Cell phones are not tested for human, were not tested for human health safety before they were put on the market. It is the first time in the history of mankind that we put microwave-emitting devices directly to our heads and expose our organs, including our brains, to the deep-penetrating radiation. Any comparison with TV stations used to alleviate our worries is a sham." Authorities need to implement the precautionary principle," I'm still quoting him. And then he said, "The time to act is now," and I have the article for you that he just wrote. There are several doctors who served on that panel who are stating that. Dr. Moskowitz is the Director for Family Community Health at University of Berkeley, California. He also published an analysis of the research, and he just did his safety tips, and I think that it would be important to incorporate this and to maybe start a working group to look at all this information. He says, "Avoid holding your cellphone or cordless home phone near your head or body during phone calls. Use speakerphone, text, or use a wired headset. Avoid carrying your mobile phone in your pocket, on your belt, close to your body. Do not put it in your bra," which some young women are doing, I think it's important that we let them know, there are case studies now showing increased cancer in young women. "Turn off mobile devices when not in use or switch to airplane mode. Turn off Wi-Fi and Bluetooth when not in use, and do not use a wireless tablet or a laptop on your lap." Actually, that's against manufacturer's advice, and I could, in detail, explain that to you, but those are tested at eight inches from the body, they're not meant to be on our laps. Also, not iPads. "When the signal is poor, your mobile device emits more radiation, so avoid use when surrounded by metal." I was concerned in the policy that they're using the phones on the buses or any wireless enabled... I was concerned in the policy that they're using the phones on the buses or any wireless-enabled device. It can be more times the radiation because it bounces off the metal. This is especially important for pregnant women, pregnant staff, pregnant students. They need to know this information. And I also brought, I had talked about the Baby Safe Project before. That's a group of OB-GYNs and neuroscientists, I'm sorry. And I brought best practices for you, if you'd like to see them from doctors.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We will now move to public comment. Speakers on non-agenda items. Our first speaker is Asia Hamilton, a student at Barack Obama Elementary School. Is Asia here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Maxwell and all board members. My name is Asia Hamilton. I currently attend Barack Obama Elementary School and will be in the third grade in the fall. I will have another two years, two more years to attend. Unlike my sister, I started attending at Barack Obama Elementary when I began kindergarten. I have had the opportunity to have such great teachers in my path of learning here at Barack Obama Elementary. I am very sad that Mrs. Harmon is no longer our principal. I just want to make sure that when the decision is made, that our community parents and a student at Barack Obama will be able to help with the selection. Lastly, I think that Ms. Mark will, Ms. Mark, our current vice principal, would be a great choice.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Our next speaker is Ariana Hamilton, a fifth-grade student at Barack Obama Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell and all board members. My name is Ariana Hamilton. I currently attend Barack Obama Elementary School, and I will be in the fifth grade in the fall. This will be the last year I will attend the school. Since the decision was made that 2014-2015 school year will be the last year that the sixth graders can attend, I am still saddened by that news. Now, I am sad that we lost our principal, Ms. Harmon. This is a lot to get over in such a short time. When selecting our principal, I hope that the board takes into consideration the parents' and the teachers' concerns. Lastly, I think Ms. Mark will, will, Ms. Mark, our current vice principal, will be able, will be a great choice.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Our next speaker is Alexis Smith, Rising Senior at Suratsville High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Alexis Smith, and I am a Rising Senior at Suratsville High School. I have been a member of the Marching Hornets Band since my freshman year and have enjoyed every minute in the past three years. I am speaking today in regards to the development of our new band room. I was very excited as a ninth grader to come to Suratsville and be a part of the best band in PG County. Our band was and still is a very large family, and every day, our 100-plus family would cram into our tiny room. During the 2011-2012 school year, we were told our new band room would be ready before the beginning of the next school year, which did not happen. The same happened the 2012-2013 school year, and the projection for the band room to be completed was June 2013. The band room was completely empty twice, which was not an easy task, and construction did not start until after the second projected finish date. With the room under construction during the past 2013-2014 school year, we were forced to move into a classroom on the opposite end of the school to accommodate our large group. The relocation was very difficult, seeing as the room we transferred to was smaller than our original band room. We were excited to see that construction had begun, only to be disappointed to hear that it had to be halted and delayed for various reasons. I speak for the number of Suratsville band students and band booster parents who are here with me today when I say we do not want our school to be handed the short end of the stick. This band room has been a topic of discussion for a number of years, I think it's 10 now, and we would finally like to see what has been talked about for so many years come into effect. We constantly tell ourselves, "Maybe they'll start today," or, "Maybe they'll start when we come back." "Oh, the break's done, they'll start next day." The minuscule amount of hope we had that action would be taken on its own is now gone. We are aware that other schools have had additions to their buildings and, in other cases, completely new facilities. The project that we are asking is not nearly as large as we are only asking for a new room. Also, while our chorus is not matched our band in size, they are supposed, they are equally as important and are supposed to get the room next to ours. Construction has also affected them as they were relocated into a tiny room upstairs in our facility. In conclusion, I ask the esteemed members of the Board of Education to take into consideration everything I have stated. This new band room would do wonders for our program and allow current and future students to continue in our band legacy, where we don't just play the music, we become the music. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our next speaker is Renee Hamilton, parent of Barack Obama Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell and all board members. My name is Renee Hamilton. I currently reside in Upper Marlboro, and both my daughters, Ariana and Asia Hamilton, attend Barack Obama Elementary School. Ariana will begin fifth grade, Asia third grade, in the fall. I was heartbroken when I heard the news that our principal, Ms. Pearl Harmon, was leaving us at Barack Obama Elementary School. She was the principal from onset, and her leadership abilities, along with her knowledge, allowed us at Barack Obama Elementary to strive for obtainable goals here in Prince George's County. I am currently the treasurer of the PTA until July 1, 2014. Ms. Harmon's involvement with the PTA was so helpful, she made sure that we were not forgotten in the process. Her involvement and scholastic achievement was her priority at Barack Obama. She made sure she utilized the resources that were given to, that were given to properly allocate the financial data to achieve a positive outcome. She created an atmosphere for a successful year with educating our children, along with enhancing the staff in whichever area that was needed. As a principal, she knew how to make our students learn on a level that is represented from pre-K to sixth-grade level, along with our school being overcrowded. The facts just tell the story. I am here to discuss my concerns regarding the appointment of the interim principal. The fact that, in the past, there was a parent-teacher that represented the panel when these candidates were selected, which does not exist any longer, concerns me. Why is that? The parents, along with the teachers here at Barack, I'm sorry, Barack Obama Elementary, we are like family that work together. We all have a common goal for the enhancement and achieving of our children. According to the principal selection process and the knowledge that was given on behalf of the Office of the Talent Development, the position should be posted according to the process Barack Obama Elementary School, I'm sorry, Barack Obama Elementary School ever involved, was they ever involved in the leadership profile? According to the process, this is something that is in place with all schools in the event the superintendent declares a principal vacancy. As of today, the position still has not been posted, and I want to make sure that the process is followed according to the administrative procedures. I am here today to make sure that when making the decision on the position for the principal at Barack Obama Elementary School, that we are not just receiving, sorry.
You can finish your sentence.
Ms. Hamilton, my colleagues are saying you can come back and finish that sentence if you want.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. I am, okay, that they are not just receiving anybody to fill the slot. We have come too far to have our concerns and efforts not heard in the selection process for our new principal. Thank you, Renee Hamilton, a concerned parent.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Our next speaker is James William Thompson. Is Mr. Thompson here to talk about teacher recognition? James William Thompson. All right, Mr. Thompson was not able to join us. We will go on to our next speaker. I have Scott Hertzberg on charter schools. Thank you, Scott.
Good evening. Thanks for this opportunity. My son attends Baden. He's now a second grader, and my daughter, with Mr. Valentine's Children, is a four-year-old over at the great program at John Henson Montessori. I do have a complaint today, or want to highlight a problem, but just, I'll say something that I really liked this year was the start at Baden of the free breakfast for all the students at the school. That was wonderful. I'm on the agenda as complaining about charter schools in general. I don't want to do that. There's some wonderful charter schools. I've been reading The Post and The Times, things about a network of charter schools, and we just recently approved one of the schools in this network. It's called the Chesapeake Math and Information Technology Academy. Now, The Washington Post had an article in 2012 about how when Dr. Maxwell was over in Andal Rundel, he had a problem with schools in the same network. The article said, "Maxwell wants the school, among other things, to hire qualified and fully-certified teachers, reform the board of directors of the school, use appropriate procurement and bidding processes from outside contractors. The schools in this network have a history of self-dealing and nepotism." The Post article said, "Many of the issues Maxwell raised have been cited by authorities elsewhere about schools in a network that has 135 charter schools around the nation." And the network is, believe it or not, run by a Turkish, well, affiliated with a Turkish cleric named Fatala Gulon. The schools are called Gulon schools. By no means do I want it to appear that I'm being anti-Turkish or anti-Islam. In fact, this Turkish movement's quite moderate and quite secular. The problem is the nepotism and the corruption. The New York Times had a story in 2011, and I'll submit all this, about how there's a lot of problems with them importing a lot of Turkish administrators and teachers. However, and I'll read from the New York Times story, they found a greater problem. But an examination by the New York Times of the Harmony Schools in Texas casts light on a different area, the way they spend the public money. Our New York Times examination raises questions about whether ultimately the schools are using taxpayer dollars to benefit the Gulon movement. Gulon happens to live in a palatial mansion in the Pocono Mountains. Yes, schools in this network have great test scores. So do great specialty schools, tag schools in our program, so do some of the great charter schools. They have good test scores, yes, but we can get the same results from tag schools or charter schools without a history of graft. We deserve specialty schools and charter schools that are not enmeshed in corruption. We heard today about how everyone, there's limited resources. We want to build High Point, we want this band room for the great band in Suratsville. How in the world are we giving money to schools affiliated with this charter school network? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nicole Botrager.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell, board members, parents, students, and all those who have a stake in the success of Prince George's County Public Schools. My name is Nicole Botrager, and I'm the mother of four children in the Prince George's County Public School System with two more little boys waiting their turns. I'm also a 21-year veteran of the United States Air Force, where I worked for the principal military advisor to the president, and also taught government ethics and leadership classes at the United States Naval Academy. I say all this not to top my own accomplishments, but to give you a sense of my background and my ability to analyze systems and situations. I've spent untold hours participating in the student transfer process, and from my perspective, that process is broken. Data that I have collected, families that I have spoken to, and some administrators involved in the process all provide different examples of the ineffectiveness of this system. In my brief remarks, I hope to shed some light on this process so that you might work to improve it, so that we can have better outcomes for our children. Because children are our business, and they do come first. Integrity, accountability, and excellence are core values that every organization should aspire to. While I found many core values for PGCPs subordinate organizations, there were no overarching ones for the entire staff. Perhaps this explains why my final appeal to you was initially rejected. A Board of Education executive staff member called me to say that I had exceeded the 30-day window, when in fact I had sent notification that I was awaiting information from the OGC and would file an appeal within 30 days of receipt of that information. After admitting that she had received the fax, she offered excuses that she didn't have a way to contact me when I provided phone numbers, dates of correspondence, the names of other PGCPs personnel I had contacted, leading up to the extension. Neither she nor her supervisor thought it necessary to walk down the hall or call someone to close the loop. While I've had additional examples of this lack of accountability and poor communication between offices, I don't have time to comment on all of them here. During this process, I received more insight into the data that you used to deny my initial request for student transfer yesterday and your notification that it would be reviewed than I gained in the two previous rejections or Maryland Public Information Act responses. Some in your OGC did their best to circumvent, not to communicate. Moreover, based on the data that I gleaned from both Barack Obama and Longfields Elementary Schools, I believe the projections they offered you were erroneous. Why else would I have been encouraged to fill out a tag lottery form for Longfields Elementary on 13 June after being declined twice if there were no seats to be taken? When I researched on my own, I found that the numbers at Barack Obama Elementary School, even with the recent boundary change, continued to put the school over the state-rated capacity for both the entire school and grade level, while the requested transfer school was well undersubscribed writ large and with tolerances, within tolerances at grade level. Basically, you were telling my family that it would be better to send our two sons to two different elementary schools and leave us to support our children in four different schools instead of three. If you are hearing me, I hope you can clear, you can see clearly from the top to the bottom of your staff, doesn't have the information they need to make decisions on school transfers, lack the data. Lack of data makes it difficult to make efficient or even better effective decisions. Further, when a decision is being made, your personnel are not communicating with each other or other stakeholders with a consistent clarity and accountability expected to treat parents as partners or allow parents to share in the responsibility for successful schools. I call on you all to aggressively work toward continuous improvement and show through your leadership that you are accountable for the processes within your system. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you. Our next speaker is Timothy Gully, PTA President-elect at Barack Obama Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Gully, an involved parent at Barack Obama Elementary. I would like to express my concerns regarding the process on selecting an individual to fill the open position of principal at Barack Obama Elementary. During the interactive forum held last Thursday, I identified four characteristics important to me in selecting a candidate for principal. They include the following: maintains continuity, promotes high student expectations, exercises participatory leadership, and provides instructional leadership. It has been one week since we identified our concerns and characteristics. I understand the vast amount of time involved with consolidating all responses gathered from the meeting and find a suitable candidate to meet the highest standards required and expected to lead at Barack Obama. Therefore, as a concerned parent with maintaining continuity, I suggest a candidate from Barack Obama Elementary Obama Elementary, current leadership staff, be appointed as interim principal until a suitable candidate can be identified. The parents, staff, and students are committed to excellence and deserve nothing less. Please consider my request, and thank you for hearing me.
Our next speaker is Sayron Grant, Suratsville High School Marching Band Boosters Organization.
Good evening, Board, Board of Education members, and Dr. Maxwell. My name is Sayon Grant. I am a band booster mom for the Suratsville High School Marching Hornets. I am here to advocate for the completion of our new band room. Originally, we was told that the new band room was to be completed June 2013. That got pushed back to January 2014. However, due to procurement issues, construction is on hold yet again for another three to four months. Ten years ago, Suratsville was on the schedule to receive a new band room. 2011, Ms. Dent, our band director, was told that construction was about to begin. Excited, simply put, yes. The band kids packed up all of the instruments, music stands, uniforms, and band accessories and moved them to various parts of the high school to settle for our temporary location while construction was about to begin. What all turned out to be a big disappointment. Fall of 2013, the renovation project had begun. Ms. Dent had to cram 115-plus band students into a mediocre-sized art classroom. Due to the size of the classroom, the kids had no room to breathe, move around without knocking a stand or instrument over, just created an overall overcrowded situation. The room was just too small. We didn't even have ample storage for the band equipment. There was band equipment stored in the cafeteria behind the stage. This became an epic fail because many of the band instruments and equipment was either destroyed, broken, or even stolen. There was no safety gate or security cage put around for... On the stage. Academics. I am a proud mom of triplets. Both of my daughters have autism. One of my daughters, Takaya, have been playing in the band for three years now and is recruiting her sister, Tyann, to play in the percussion section. My son, Tyree, is an avid violin player. However, because of the disappointment of our new band room is on hold, sad me that I have to rethink... Rethink about Tyann being in the band and Tyree opting out of orchestra band due to disabilities and safety concerns, and the current band and future students have to stay in a cramped-up band classroom for another year. I bring this up because my daughter, Takaya, has complained many times that the band room is either overcrowded, it gets way too loud, she gets frustrated easily, and she loses focus because she cannot concentrate on what is being talked to her. You have to keep in mind that this temporary classroom sits between two other classrooms and more classrooms along the way, not to mention the gym is right around the corner. It became quite loud and uncomfortable for a child with autism. We have... If we had the new band room as promised, it would alleviate any distractions. The band students would have an awesome learning experience and focus more on music instruction. I had a chance to visit Oxon Hill High School. I was astonished to see within two years that the high school was completed and open for the school year. It had a modern-day band room with all the amenities, not to mention a new stadium, retunda, state-of-the-art classroom. My question is, how is Oxon Hill High School any different than Suratsville High School? Both schools have to go through the long process to start the groundbreaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erica Edlin Burns of Glen Arden Woods Elementary School.
Edlin Barnes, B-A-R-N-E-S. Sure. No problem. I am the parent of two children who are attending Robert Goddard Montessori in the upcoming school year. I recently learned through unofficial communications that after Robert Goddard French Immersion School vacates our facility, another school, Glen Arden Woods, will be temporarily assuming their place at our location. I, as well as other parents, are deeply concerned about how this change can impact our program. Glen Arden Woods' start and end times don't align with Robert Goddard's. This can cause major disruption to the Montessori children who are engaged in their instruction, while tremendous noise from the buses and parents dropping off their children sound in the background. It also poses problems and can cause confusion to parents from Robert Goddard, who may be dropping off or picking up their children at times that happen to fall within Glen Arden start or dismissal times. Our children already have limited time to eat, 20 minutes, and some don't get to eat till after 1:00 PM. This is due to the fact that our lunchroom can only accommodate a limited number of students. Our children are rushed in and out of the cafeteria while trying to choke down their food, which is clearly unhealthy. Moving another program into our soon-to-be-vacated space limits our ability to expand our program. With more space, we can move some of our teachers who are in trailers to full-size classrooms for expanded instruction and can potentially enlarge our enrollment population. We are continuing to lose students throughout the school year, and it can be challenging to fill those seats with qualified individuals. Equally as disturbing as the impacts of the change is the manner in which we found out about this change. One of the goals for PGCPs is to communicate in a more transparent manner. Learning about this change the way that we did and at the end of the school year leaves little time for parental feedback and questioning. This seems like a way of potentially slipping this change in under the radar, and it causes one to ponder if it is the beginning of some bigger change to come. We know that PGCPs and the Board deals with a number of tremendous undertakings and works hard to create an environment of learning and opportunity for our children. But we ask that we parents have more of a partnership and are consulted and communicated with in a timely manner. Our ultimate goal is to ensure that our children are provided with a safe and challenging learning environment. In order to ensure that we are... As parents are making the best decision about our children's education, we need to be consulted and informed of such major changes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gina Bowler from MyBilingualChild.
I'm glad to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Gina Bowler. My daughter is registered to start kindergarten in the new Spanish immersion program at Overlook Elementary School. I'm also the co-founder of a grassroots group, MyBilingualChild. We advocate for Spanish immersion, other language immersion programs, and international baccalaureate programs. Of the three schools with the new Spanish immersion dual-language programs, only Phyllis E. Williams has before and after care at the school. The other two schools, Caesar Chavez and Overlook, do not have before and after care on-site. It's noteworthy that the two French immersion schools do have before and after care on-site. My and other parents' questions about before and after care are met with well-intentioned, but Pat answers like, "There's no before and after care at the school." The school has flyers you can pick up from private before and after care programs that operate off-site. It's up to the principal to decide whether to have before and after care at the school. After further conversations with various sources, however, I learned that there are more options than those initial responses suggest. For example, before and after care can be provided at the school by the school system's before and after extended learning program, if the principal approves, and a minimum of 40 students register. Transportation to and from a private off-site before and after care facility and the school can be provided under certain circumstances, such as van transportation by the facility if a minimum number of students participate, or bus transportation by the school system if the facility is within the student's inbound-y neighborhood school. Clearly, it's important for parents to learn about and consider a range of before and after care and transportation options sooner rather than later, so that they can start making informed choices among the available options and/or pursue new attractive options over the summer months. That's especially so for parents like me with children new to the school system who will attend the new Spanish immersion dual-language programs instead of inbound-y neighborhood schools. One idea that could help is for the Spanish immersion dual-language schools to send an email to parents with an overview of before and after care and transportation options and questions to gauge parents' interest in the different options. In the same email, the schools could make an offer for parents to voluntarily join a directory or listserv to be hosted by a school staff person or a PTO or PTA leader. This could expedite parental engagement around before and after care and transportation options and other school-related matters. My request is that the CEO and board members encourage the Spanish immersion dual-language schools to provide such a communication mechanisms for parental engagement as soon as possible this summer. Thanks for your prompt consideration of this request.
Nice timing. Our next speaker is Denise Hazard.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Maxwell. For the record, my name is Denise Hazard, and I'm a teacher at Heather Hills Elementary School. In the past several months, a few Heather Hills parents have come before this board and written letters to express their displeasure with our school and our leadership. Their mission has been to ruin the reputation of our school, our staff, and our principal under the guise that they're doing what is best for our students. As members of the staff, we can no longer sit back and watch as a few disgruntled parents stand before you, twist the truth, and in some cases, lie about what is going on... Excuse me, at Heather Hills. We are here tonight to share our perspective and the achievements of our students, our principal, and our staff. Our principal, Patsy Hush, has been at the helm of Heather Hills for 19 years. During her tenure, Heather Hills was awarded the Blue Ribbon School of Excellence and the E-Gate Certification. Both of these honors are highly coveted by schools and require much dedication. Under Mrs. Hush's direction, Heather Hills was able to receive our E-Gate Certification the first year it was submitted. Mrs. Hush has always encouraged her staff to be the best, and because of her constant encouragement and support, every member of the Heather Hills teaching staff has now become highly qualified and trained to teach gifted education to our students. During her tenure at Heather Hills, our students have always been numbered in the top 5% of elementary schools on the MSA and other nationally norm tests. In fact, last year, our school ranked number one in the county and number four in the entire state of Maryland for our MSA scores. At Heather Hills, we have a staff dedicated to providing both a rigorous academic environment and as many creative opportunities as possible for our tag students. Here are just a few of the programs that are happening successfully at Heather Hills. We have a weekly enrichment program with classes such as chorus, photography, sign language, robotics, fashion design, poetry and writing, yearbook, gardening, recycling, morning announcements, student government, and the Gold Club. Heather Hills also offers field trips throughout the year, theme-based projects, use of Google Chromebooks for self-paced, individualized, differentiated instruction, guest speakers from our community, Career Day and International Day, in-school field trips, cultural arts assemblies throughout the year, First in Math and other technology-based learning opportunities, Artist in Residency Program. We have a fifth grade and a second grade musical. We also have fourth and fifth grade band instruction. Full implementation of our tag program includes foreign language instruction, William and Mary Language Arts Program for gifted students, Junior Grade Book Series, Literature Circles, Delta Science Modules, and Hands-on Science Experiments. Heather Hills has had numerous participants and winners in Write a Book, Science Fair, Choir Festival, American Legion Essay, Destination Imagination, and the City of Bowie Writing Poster Contest. I'm a very proud member of the Heather Hills team. Please don't let a few people ruin the reputation of this fine institution and the wonderful veteran of education, our principal, Patsy Hush. We urge you to come and visit Heather Hills during the next school year and see for yourself the wonderful things that are happening. Please, we encourage you to come and see us next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Sullivan.
I am the proud father, very proud father, of a rising fourth grader at Heather Hills Elementary School. I have three key points to make about Heather Hills. One, thank you. Two, thank you. Three, thank you so much for the dedicated staff, administration, and fine curriculum that you have provided us through Heather Hills. That's my bottom line up front. I have a child that is nine years old next month. He's got two years' experience at Heather Hills. He transferred from a monastery school. He didn't have an easy transition. He was not ready to be sitting in the seat. He was not ready to be listening to a teacher. He was not ready to have deadlines and after-school projects and homework. It was not part of his core abilities as he was prepared through his monastery experience. But in first grade, he had the second-highest score on the OSATs. He was so proud. I still remember that day. In fact, he took it twice. First day he came home, he said, "Daddy, I'm so excited. We did something new today." We took a computer test. We had to fill in the circles. And he said, "Daddy, I got every single one of them wrong." That's why they did a pre-test. Testing is not part of the monastery curriculum. All right? So he had to learn how to take a test. Then he had to learn how to do it within a timeframe. Their curriculum is rigid. Their curriculum is stressful. They have homework almost every night. I know. I sit there, I watch him do it, and I sign off on every single one of them, don't I? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I feel blessed. My family is blessed. And next year, I've got a two-year-old starting there, too. Our second grader's starting there, too. I've got a four-year-old over at JPH. And we're working with him so that he'll join his brothers in 2017. Write a book, science fair... His science fair, get this, was proving... I know the story for another time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The Hyperloop and how to solve the Cantorwitz Effect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a look it up. I had to.
Our next speaker, and I realize I think I was slightly out of order. My apologies for that, is Heather Campman.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Maxwell. I, too, had to look up Cal's science fair project as the head of the Science Department for the school. Never seen a third grader do anything like that. Anyway, we are here tonight to speak on behalf of our beloved school, Heather Hills. There are a couple of us here to give the staff's perspective on recent events that have happened at Heather Hills. We also have letters from parents, one of which I'd like to read part of to you tonight. The letter has four main points. The first is that parents' concerns matter, and parents have the right to express them. Number two is that Ms. Hush deserved better. Number three, the system could have handled the issue or the issues at Heather Hills in a better way. And the fourth is that the tag program at Heather Hills is beneficial in many ways. The beginning of this letter is amazing. It's written by one of my former parents who just left Heather Hills. "In many ways, Heather Hills has been a shining example in Prince George's County Public Schools. Yet, the way Ms. Hush's tenure at Heather Hills ended does not portray Heather Hills or PG County in a good light. I was at Heather Hills on June 13th, and I observed the variety of emotions from the staff and the students accompanying the announcement that Ms. Hush was retiring from Heather Hills. At first, I did not understand what was going on. Then slowly, the information that Ms. Hush was forced out began to diffuse in the community. The question many parents are asking is how and why did this administration beyond Heather Hills allow matters to end in this way? I have heard time and again the same concerns from parents. I think that the school system squandered a perfect opportunity to do things right, listen, review, understand, and address issues from parents, staff, or even Ms. Hush herself in a professional, effective manner. The other questions are, why did the higher-ups discount Ms. Hush's contributions and many successes and accomplishments at Heather Hills? Yes, there is no doubt that students, parents, teachers, and even Ms. Hush herself would agree there were areas needing improvement. As a parent, I stress that all students matter and concerns should be addressed as they arise. Also, as much as possible, the expectation is that a school would make an effort to address and meet each student's needs. What was the response of the school system above Ms. Hush?" What was the response of the school system above Ms. Hush to these issues brought to their attention? Were the Prince George's County administrators truly committed to understanding the parents' concerns or finding productive ways to support the school in resolving their differences? The letter goes on to highlight this particular student's experience in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. So I don't have time to read it all, but these are the concerns of one parent, they have been the concerns of our entire staff. She worded it so beautifully that I read her letter. I know this email was forwarded to all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anita Sturgeon. Sturgeon, thank you, of... and Robert Goddard, PTSA.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell and Board of Directors. Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak before you. Also, thank you for making the motion to move up non-agendum items of speakers as well. I wanted to speak to you regarding the elimination of the front office position. The role of the individual in this position is critical to the overall safety and security of our children. This person served as the first point of contact when you enter Robert Goddard Montessori School. Some of their responsibilities include interfacing on a daily basis with students, parents, staff, and the public. They were also responsible for the daily, for keeping watch of the students for the daily pickup, for those who did not ride the bus, as well as since we have a three-year-old half-day program, they are ensuring the safety of those individuals that haven't been picked up as well. They also ensure that all volunteers were fingerprinted and properly signed in, and also with the new PG, Prince George's County Public School Board of Education policy in regards to requiring everyone to have identification when they checked in, this was the individual. We constantly have a lot of people moving in and out of our school because we have a dismissal every day halfway through, halfway through the day for our three-year-olds in the program. Their familiarity with the various people who come in and out of our school is necessary for the safety of our children. In this day and age, our schools unfortunately have become the targets of criminal and terrorist-like activities. From my understanding, her responsibilities will now be split among several different people to fill the position. However, the two main individuals that will be handling those duties will be the school clerk and the principal's secretary. Being a frequent volunteer at the school, I have witnessed the chaos and neglect that occurs when this individual is not present in that position. We are requesting that this position be reinstated and filled by the individual who held the position. We understand that the position was lost because of budget cuts, but we feel that it's a necessity to have that individual there for the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Collier, parent Barack Obama Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell and other Board members here today. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak to you. As you know, Barack Obama Elementary School will welcome a new principal for 2014-2015 school year. We, the parents of Barack Obama Elementary School, have serious concerns about the process that will be used to select the new principal for our students. Our timeline for this process seems very rushed, and after careful review of the administrative policy, number 4113, principal selection process, we are even more concerned that our voices may not be heard at all. To further matters, we are now aware that an interim principal was appointed whose present position is an instructional director. Our concerns is that she has not been in the classroom interacting with students, educators, and parents on a day-to-day basis since 2008. We take great pride in our community-based elementary school. We not only engage our children and assist our educators, we actively participate in the education that takes place daily. We received notification on June 13th, 2014, that our present principal has resigned, had resigned, and all parents were officially notified on June 16th, 2014. We were asked to complete a community input survey that would be used to select the ideal candidate. On June 17th, 2014, PTA parents and neighboring community members were notified and a community meeting was held on June 19th. The community meeting was conducted by Dr. Cassandra Lassiter, Instructional Director, and Monica Holmes, Office of Talent Development. It was indicated that there was an existing pool of candidates to select from, and our parents want to be sure the ideal candidate is selected, not appointed, by the committee. It was indicated that all of our comments and concerns were being documented and will be discussed prior to the start of the process. During the working session, parents were asked to develop lists with attributes that the next principal should possess, and then asked to share those attributes with the entire group. A Q&amp;A session took place following the activity, and parents were very concerned about the following items. The process does not allow the community to have adequate input in the selection. Short turnaround time to make selections. Consider internal candidate for the position. Position was not posted online. Include a parent and educator from the school on the committee with the division chiefs, leaders that can inspire our educators to be the best at teaching our students. Administrative policy 4113 indicates that parents and the community should be involved in this process. However, nowhere after the initial notification and community meeting does the policy indicate that input from the parents and community is used to make the decision. Your entry plan for the first six months discussed two vital goals. Goal two, transform community. Goal three, create organizational structure.
Thank you.
We ask that you consider including an educator and parent on the panel.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Dolores Millhouse from My Bilingual Child.
Good afternoon. If I can just put my purse down.
Sure.
Good afternoon. My name is Dolores Millhouse. I am the co-founder of My Bilingual Child. I first want to applaud you all for the work that you all have done, and I know you're probably tired of seeing my face, but you'll see me forever until my son gets into the program and gets out in fourteen years. I'm very excited about what we have accomplished over the past year in having Spanish immersion programs now in three of our schools in the county. I believe that is a huge accomplishment for us. I am standing before you today because we now have to move on to communication. I believe that education starts at home, and do understand my child has one more year before he is eligible for any programs in the county. And it's important that you all understand that I am one who pushes communication, and I actively seek communication, but everyone does not do that. I know that when we have been searching for different things on the website, talking to certain people, the communication has not always been streamlined. So I just want to say three things that I think are very important because I looked at the strategic plan that you all have for community engagement. I think it's a good start. I'm very excited about what will happen over the next couple of years, but I want you all to understand that we have to be proactive. As I sat back and listened to a lot of parents talk about the communication and what they're not getting while they're in the school systems right now, I think that if you focus on framing your communication and understanding, take it from the other side of the reader and not just focusing on what you think of as a board or as school officials. I also want us to make sure that we understand transparency is important. As we have these parents that are now enrolling their kids or who have now been accepted into the Spanish immersion program, we have a lot of parents that are reaching out to My Bilingual Child about information and what's happening. So when they reach out to us, we're reaching out to the school system, and we're not fully getting information that's very clear and consistent about what's happening and what's going on. So as we started with the schools themselves, the frontline staff, we're not really able to communicate effectively what was happening. So I encourage you all to make sure that when we look at being proactive and also transparent, that we focus on streamlining the message and making sure that parents are getting the information. So if you talk to someone at the schools, they have the same information if they talk to someone at the school board. It's important because we have a school meeting, well, not a school meeting, but a parent-community meeting that we are encouraging parents to come out to. We will share information with you. We ask you that you communicate with us so that we continue to work with these parents because the success of this program is based on community engagement and everyone working together and doing their part. So I'm excited with working with you all. You will see me at every board meeting unless my child is sick or my husband has to work, but let's do this and we can make this work. We have one more year for my child comes into the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Noelle Tyler for Robert Goddard Elementary.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm actually talking about three different things that, so I really didn't have a topic. Glen Arden Woods is coming to Robert Goddard Montessori. We weren't notified. We found out secondhand, and we are concerned about a couple of different things. Sharing common space, such as our media center, our cafeteria, and our playgrounds, busing, and parent arrival. Right now, it's a big mess, and it's going to get worse with additional schools coming in. Then we're going on to budget cuts. We've lost two people at our school this year. Going into next year, we've lost our front staff person, which Anita had already gone into big things about, and we lost our middle school counselor. She specialized in middle school, and that was unfortunate. Also, we are just curious if our three-year-olds, since our three-year-olds are half-day, whether they're counted in our overall numbers for our budget. We have over a hundred three-year-olds in our school, and they use every area that we have. So if they aren't, that's a big concern for us. And third thing I want to discuss is, we in the past had a Montessori coordinator who coordinated for all three schools in our county, and we no longer have that, and we're curious as to why. They reported back to what was the superintendent, which would now be the CEO, and we are just curious if that is something that we could implement again in the future. And I know I was really quick, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Gould.
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell and Board members and everyone that's still here. I am, I've been a teacher for thirty-seven years, thirty of which have been served in Prince George's County schools, twenty of which have been served at Heather Hills Elementary, and the last nineteen of which have been served under the direction of Principal Patsy P. Hush. And I'm here tonight to testify about the privilege and the blessing that it's been to have worked at such a wonderful school as Heather Hills, and for the superb leadership and guidance that Mrs. Hush has given to our staff and to thousands of children who have had the opportunity to attend our school. On the last day of the school this year, our entire staff was sickened, disheartened, and disillusioned to learn that Mrs. Hush had been involuntarily transferred from our school. Upon receiving this degrading and very disrespectful news, Mrs. Hush finally decided to give up the fight and retire. Our entire staff has felt very betrayed, not by Mrs. Hush, but a handful of individuals who took it upon themselves to represent the entire parent body and wage a war against Mrs. Hush. We didn't understand this. We didn't understand why they did this. They sent numerous letters to our Instructional Director, our Associate Superintendent, and to the CEO of PG, Prince George's County Public Schools, airing their complaints and distorting the truth about the atmosphere and the learning opportunities available at Heather Hills. Rather than meeting with Mrs. Hush directly, these parents decided to jump the chain of command and urged others to do the same. The same group of three or four individuals also waged a verbal campaign against Mrs. Hush by appearing at several Board of Education meetings and painting an extremely negative picture of Mrs. Hush, the staff, and the school climate of Heather Hills. Many of the comments made by these parents were vicious, unjustified, and simply untruthful. They certainly do not represent the feelings of the majority of parents, staff, and others from our school. As a member of the Heather Hills family, I would like to have an opportunity to share a different perspective about our school than the one that has been recently portrayed at several Board of Education meetings. Our principal over the past nineteen years, Mrs. Hush, has done an outstanding job of serving Prince George's County Public Schools as an educator, a member of the Tag Office, and a principal of Heather Hills Elementary School for the past forty-four years. She deserves to be honored with respect and dignity, not publicly humiliated. Mrs. Hush has been open-minded and forward-thinking as the administrator of Heather Hills for nineteen years. Whenever a staff member has asked for funds or materials for a project, a field trip, an assembly, a class activity, or an innovative idea, she's always made it happen for us. She's been the embodiment of the tag program. Talented and gifted students have special learning needs, and she's always gone to bat for our special population of students. It was partially through her constant and vigilant efforts that Heather Hills actually became one of the county's two flagship tag centers. Her legacy will not be forgotten. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Alexandra Callaway.
I'm sickened by what I just heard because I am one of those disgruntled parents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am one of those disgruntled parents at Heather Hills Elementary School, but I am here to say that my being disgruntled came from how issues with the leadership was being handled and at all of the administrative levels. It came from administration not communicating effectively how these issues were being handled with the situations that were happening at Heather Hills. I want to make it clear that it has been an excellent experience working with the teachers, with their creative creativity, and the availability to students and parents that has been amazing. For example, Mr. Johnson, he runs the Destination Imagination Program at our school, as well as the Garden Club, and he has amazing creative methods of teaching math to his third-grade students. Mr. Etheridge creates class books every year. This year, we have an electronic version that I'll leave for you. He integrates critical and creative thinking and artwork. He encourages parent support throughout this process. He seeks it out. Ms. Gorkari has various projects that encourage communication at different levels. For example, her secret garden project is a scrapbook page assignment that summarizes the book and has very creative artistic elements to it, as well as writing elements. She also encourages different communication skills by asking the students to create oral presentations about peaceful solutions to local, county, country, and global issues. Now is the time to focus on the positive changes that are occurring and to work with the administration in this time of transition, and to continue to open the pathways of communication that have been lacking so that we all have a better understanding and the students and the teachers and the parents and the administration can all work together to make Heather Hills an even greater place and an even stronger in leadership and in the tag education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Delisha Barnett.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to thank Ms. Den and Mr. Denz for being here, the band members, our alumni, and other band boosters and supporters. Ten years ago, Surattsville High School was scheduled to receive a new band room. Hey, my three minutes ain't up!
That's what happens when you're the last speaker.
Thank you. Ten years ago, Surattsville High School was scheduled to receive a new band room. Three years ago, we were told it was about to begin. We packed up everything in the band room and moved to a temporary location while the new band was being under construction. Two of the three times, we partially unpacked the boxes and moved back into the old band room due to procurement issues. Construction never took place. The ground was not broken until fall of 2013. The band currently uses a large classroom located on the opposite side of the building. Although the classroom is of size, it is not able to house all of Mrs. Denz's equipment and band stands. Those items were stored on the stage behind, in the cafeteria, many of which are either broken or stolen. A cage was not erected to secure those items belonging to the band. Another thing to keep in mind, that is, the classroom is not a room acoustically suited for the sound of music. A classroom which is seated between other classrooms, which also provides a distraction for the other students in the school. Please be advised, the band room is not the only teaching room that is displaced during the Please be advised, the band room is not the only teaching room that is displaced during this process, but the chorus room is also, has also been moved. You see, the band room and the chorus room are joined together. So while the band room is being constructed, the band room, this chorus room is also displaced. It is very disheartening to have been told that we are getting a new band room and ten years later, we're still in the process of getting it done. We are happy to finally have the ground broken, but it will be exhilarating to have a band room not only completed, but filled with new desks, chairs, music stands, et cetera. Yes, we were told that we were only getting a shell of a band room. No new desks, no new chairs, no new stands, et cetera. Houses at the cost of the new band room did not include new furniture or fixtures for the room. Were they really going to give us a new band room with old chairs and furniture? Austin Hill High School, an entire school, was completed in two years. I'm sure it went through its process before the ground was broken, but the entire school, including the stating, was completed in two years. Yet a single band room, chorus room, has taken over ten years to be completed and trust me, it won't be completed before the fall of 2014. I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but I am frustrated about the process. My son will be a senior this fall, a section leader in the drum line, and it would be nice to, for the incoming class, to have a new band room completed and filled with new furniture. The marching hornets have been said to be the best band in the county, and they are. Having a new band room will boost the confidence of the new heads, which are the new band students, but also provide a sense of satisfaction for our Surrattsville family. Please don't let Surrattsville be the lost school, the forgotten school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, folks, that concludes public comment for this evening. Thank you so much for taking time out of your valuable, taking valuable time out of your evening to speak to us. We promise that we listen and respect everything you have to say. We will move on now. There are no legislative agenda items for this evening, so we're going to move on to six point O on our agenda, which is discussion item and update on the summer CIP projects. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items, of item six point one, update on the summer CIP project.
Dr. Eubanks, I'm happy to ask Sarah Woodhead to provide a brief overview of our discussion item this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Our summer construction season is in full swing, even though school just ended. And that's largely because it's a very short season. I counted thirty-three ten-hour days for PG CPS staff in our four-hour, or four-day-per-week stretch that we're in now. That's forty workdays for contractors, because they work at least five days a week, and fifty-seven calendar days before we have teachers back in schools. So we have a lot of work to do and, of course, we will work more than four days a week and more than five days a week for the contractors. We're pulling out all the stops to get the work done. We provided a report to you that's on the web and in that report of summer projects, we define the term fairly loosely because with that short of a season, we have some projects that may have started last year that are wrapping up this summer. We have some projects that started a couple of months ago, but will intensify during the summer period when we have schools relatively vacant. And we have some projects that will start now with more invasive work and wrap up a little bit later in the fall. But all the projects on the list do have an intensive summer focus. We're tracking around a hundred projects in that report, but of course, we have other projects ongoing at the same time. So I'll just cover some highlights briefly. We have storefront window, door, and panel wall replacements at ten schools. We have pod conversion projects at nine schools, and that's an example of a project. Many of those are already underway. Some of them are just starting up or were moving into new areas in the summer. We have pod conversions at nine schools. We have boiler replacements, roofing, ADA compliance projects, synthetic turf fields, fire alarms, and other similar projects around the county. We are opening one new elementary school and you'll be voting on the name of that, the New Hyattsville Area School. We are relocating French immersion program from Robert Goddard into the old Greenbelt Middle School and work is continuing there. We also have many projects that are being undertaken in the Building Services Department and I have, there are colleagues here who can also address some of those questions, issues that you may have questions on. And that includes work such as gym floor replacements, parking lot upgrades, gym lockers, playgrounds, and various space conversions to house new programs. So as I said in opening, some of these projects are critical for school opening this fall. Others, we're working on intensive activities that aren't compatible with the academic year to get major work out of the way before teachers and students return. And this is a busy season, we're off to a good start, and we'll be ready when teachers return on August eleventh. So that's my opening remarks for any questions you may have.
Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. Can you just give us an update on the construction taking place at Surrattsville with regard to the band room?
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to do that and it is a complicated project. As the work began, we uncovered evidence of an underground storage tank that had already been removed and had been removed in compliance with the regulations, but there was contaminated soil that had not been cleaned out. Instead, it was encapsulated and in beginning to build the addition, that was disturbed. And so we had to address it from an environmental standpoint. We had a remediation plan and that's now needing to be revised. So we have the Department of the Environment involved. They're helping us with our mitigation plan and we are contracting for additional mitigation services. So that is a significant complication. It was an unforeseen condition and we're hearing all the concerns and we share your concern and I'm thinking as we're listening to those that we need to see if we can work on your temporary facilities to see if there's some improvement that can be made as we work to get the project back on track. So we've lost a couple of months, probably about four months, and as we work through the remediation plan, we'll need to revise the schedule. But we don't have all the elements in place yet and so we're still working on that schedule revision.
So you're revising the schedule but cannot give us a deadline based on some of the...
Until we get the remediation plan defined with the Department of the Environment, I think if I gave you a plan, I might be guessing and I don't think that would be helpful.
Is there a plan to communicate in any way with the parents or at least the band members about the update and the issues that you're having right now with the construction?
Will certainly do that and clearly, that's something that we could have done better and needed to do better.
Ms. Waller.
Thank you. Throughout my community, I've received and I've shared with the administration their concerns regarding the temps, the students walking to the temps after the rain. There are, there's puddles of water and I'm not sure that this is something that you will look into during the summer, but are you looking at the, how our students are, the pathways they're getting to go to the temps and providing sidewalks where it's not flooded? And I know we've had a lot of rain and everything.
Throughout the county is the concern?
Throughout the county and I don't know if it's prevalent, but I know in my district, I think because we've done different paving, there's paving going on, we've done parking lots and for whatever reason, when it rains, there are puddles of water and the students are having to step through water.
Yeah. We do have a study that's about to start where we're going to survey all our portable classrooms for their condition and those site conditions will be one of the things that we'll look at. If there are more immediate plans, I'll find out. I can ask my colleagues in Building Services and we could get back to you on specific schools or specific plans.
Sure, because I've sent them in and I was just, I didn't know if this is all over the county, but thank you for getting back with me on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Y'all set? Thank you, Ms. Epps.
Good afternoon. I don't know if you specifically have the answer to this question, but I need to know what happened with Robert Goddard and Glen Arden Woods.
We have been working on a swing space plan for two schools that are heading into modernization, as well as some of our other major pod conversions. And so we had had an earlier plan to move Glen Arden Woods, but the school expressed a preference for the Robert Goddard location. We looked at it. We had been considering it for swing space for another school and it did come together at the end of the school year. And so again, I'll accept responsibility. I think we needed to have communicated better. It is a short-term placement and there is sufficient space and we are working with both schools to make accommodations. But it did occur late in the school year and again, I think the communications could have been better.
I'm sorry, just for clarity, you said that you were considering another school for...
Well, we have the two vacant schools in the South that we've used for swing space before and so that was the initial, the initial option that was being looked at. But that was a further travel distance for Glen Arden Woods and so this came up as a better solution, but late in the school year admittedly.
Okay, so the second part of my question regarding this process is from an academic perspective. So I've begun research with the, I guess it's like the American Society of Montessori and I'm concerned that if, that Robert Goddard Montessori is not being given the opportunity to fully implement its programming due to lack of resource, due to a lack of an environment in their own space to fully implement, you know, the tenants and the core values of that type of program. So, you know, if we're going to have a Montessori program in the county, we need to honor what Montessori is. So I don't know who's gonna, if there is a response to that, maybe not, but and you're right. I mean, you know, we have very engaged parents at Robert Goddard that really deserved better.
So on the instructional side, I mean, I think in the best of all worlds, we wouldn't need swing space and we'd have a solution for the complete backlog and things that we have, but in the facility reality we have, we have to look for how to house different schools at different places. We've been through all of these conversations with respect to, you know, Tulip Grove and other schools and we're going to have more of these conversations as we go forward and we do our best to try to work through the solutions. And, you know, the good part of the communication is, there was some, you know, some lack of satisfaction with the first round of solutions that we had and we continued to look at them, which is again, the two schools in the farther south for Glen Arden Woods. The downside of continuing to have those discussions is that then you can sometimes get behind on the conversation. There was a notification late in the school year. It was not that there wasn't a notification as was stated earlier and there's a community meeting being planned, I think, for July, the week of July seven. So while again, it's not the best time, at least we are trying to make sure that everybody understands the accommodations. But I think that, you know, if we had the ability to have separate schools, all of this past time for the French immersion at Robert Goddard, which have been sharing the facility, you know, perhaps that would have been optimum, but I don't think that I have heard in the year that I've been here, other than tonight, that it's been a diminishment of one program or the other that either French immersion or Montessori has been lagging. Perhaps I have just not heard it and it's still there anyway. But having another school in there, as there has been for a while, I don't think is any, you know, real big difference and we're going to work to straighten out the accommodations between the two schools through continued conversations with both schools, as Sarah has said.
Ms. Epps, y'all set? Okay, thank you. Mr. Burrows.
I want to sincerely thank the administration for your efforts in this division. To you and to Monica Golson, I think we've come a long way in such a short period of time. So on behalf of, you know, the community, thank you for the work that you've done, particularly with the Crossan Auditorium. Appreciate that. And the friendly gym floor, but it's not mentioned in the summer projects and I was wondering why? Okay.
Sorry, I apologize, but the list that you received was the CIP list and the gym floor for Friendly Falls under Building Services.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, I'm looking at the High Point feasibility study and I'm happy that, you know, that High Point, you know, that we're looking at that because it is an older building. My question to you is, and I saw it on our list for number three, my question to you is, you know, can you just shed some light on the process from your standpoint? Because, you know, I know Crossan's also pretty old and a lot of the comments that were made about High Point could apply to a number of buildings. So if you could just give some, shed some light.
Let me, let me try to do that. So I've said a number of times, I'll say it again right now, we have a bunch of schools that have significant needs and that's not to say that High Point doesn't or that Crossan doesn't. We have a $2.13 billion backlog. Each high school is in excess of $100 million in construction costs. So, you know, there are some conversations going on right now. You're aware that our county executive and two other county executives went before the state legislature this year and asked them to, you know, provide additional funding and if they would, the counties, you know, would to get out of the traditional, you know, funding formulas. That is being looked at. It didn't get passed in the last legislative session. We're having conversations at the county level with county government about how we might, you know, again, kind of follow up on that work from the state legislature, both with the state legislature and internally and with our partners at the county council when we were going through the budget process with them, we talked about the need to find a solution and whether that's a ten-year solution or a fifteen-year solution. You know, we need to come together around an answer. You know, I think it's great, the business community would like to get things done and the community associations, but the reality is it costs money and the question is where is that money going to come from? And do we want it enough that we're either going to pay more money or we're going to do without something else that county government funds in order to fund that construction? And so if the pot doesn't get bigger, the realignment has to happen and, you know, that's a really big question, but it's, you know, I'm not interested in pitting one school community against another school community and having every, you know, school PTA and community organization coming here and fighting for their share of a pie. I'm interested in solving the whole pie problem and baking a whole pie and really enjoying it.
No, I like the pie.
It's a metaphor, man.
But I guess my question is, so I see High Point as number three, you know, and I'm assuming that, you know, High Point will be the next high school that we build. My question is, you know, how do we, you know, what's the process for determining the next set of school, you know?
So we have a six-year plan and that six-year plan, I sort of got here when I first got here and we first started talking about that back in the fall, was adopted very, I forget exactly what that date was, the first time it was adopted, but we had to be ready to speak at the appeal process the first couple of days of December, I believe. So it was adopted pretty early in the fall when I got here, so we didn't have a whole lot of time to kind of adjust things and I don't think Sarah had been here very long, I mean. But there's a six-year plan and the way that really should work, I'm not sure that that's the way it's been working, but the way it should work is that you lay out a plan of what you're going to start and what you're going to finish and how you're going to appropriate those funds over whatever period of years it is that construction takes place. And within that six-year plan, there should be everything from the actual building projects that you have to things like, you know, safety upgrades and everything. I mean, there should be a well-laid-out plan. And so our goal after we get finished hopefully adopting budgets for final tonight is to start looking at the process for next year and what our longer-term plan is going to be and again, having continued conversations with the government about whether... about whether or not we might be able to move some projects up in that, or whether as we go into next year's plan, we should sort of leave it as it is and hope that by the time the next one comes around, that we have some additional funding coming forward.
Got it.
Can I just add, the study doesn't tell us, or you, where High Point should go in the order of schools. All it says is that when it's time to bring High Point up to standard, that it would be more effective to do it by replacing the school, possibly keeping the auditorium, than by renovating it. But it doesn't say that it's the next high school. That's really work that we need to do going forward to figure out what the right order is, if there's enough funding to actually approach the facilities in that kind of way.
Okay. Thank you.
Y'all set? Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. Thank you for the chart. It's very helpful. And I see a lot of District 5 schools on there, so it gives me an opportunity to track what's happening over the summer. My questions are, so Tulip Grove is not on here, and I know it's a longer-range project. So, that particular project may not necessarily matter for the beginning of school, but it is helpful to have the regular updates. But if that's not something that's feasible for the summer for that project, that's fine. But I would ask Dr. Eubanks that we get at least every two weeks updates on the project's schedule for the summer, so that we're not, beginning of the school year, not knowing exactly what's going on with the projects and don't have any unnecessary or delays that we're unaware of.
We will do our best to provide what updates are available. And whether they're falling behind or not, I don't know that, you know, again, with, you know, with every two weeks, you know, from tonight, I mean, we have a holiday week coming in next week. I'm not sure whether the week after that, whether there's gonna be a lot to report. But we will report what we have, I think, available for significant reports without, you know, burdening people with, you know, 20 pages of, you know, reporting.
Well, I guess all I'm asking is what is for reasonableness. So, I'm not asking to burden anyone. I'm just asking, we do have experiences of having projects over the summer and having to displace students because projects weren't completed. I'm not suggesting that's gonna happen. Things happen for different reasons. Sometimes the reasons are out of anybody's control. But just would like to be aware that projects are on schedule for the opening of the school.
You bet.
Thank you. My other questions were, is just specific to the, were the projects for the summer, part of the contractors, I guess, for the summer projects, are they part of a bid process for these continuation of contractors who are already working on projects? And if not, can you explain what the justification would be for those?
Sure. I don't think we have anybody from purchasing, but we reviewed the questions since it was submitted earlier today. So, all of the projects that we have undertaken were awarded using a competitive process. And all of them, of course, in compliance with Maryland law. Some, there's a whole variety, and to some extent, the report does describe it. Some of them are the traditional design-bid-build, where we have an architect, then we go through a classic bidding process and then construct it. Some of them are done using a job-order process, where we have vendors that the school board approved at prices, unit prices, that were part of the contract. And the school board just approved, I think, 15 additional vendors on that list. So, some of them were awarded that way. We also have some cooperative purchasing agreements that are similar to GSA schedule, where a third party undertook the competitive bidding process and has a slate of approved vendors that we're allowed to use. And so, there's really a whole variety, depending on the timeframe, the type of work that's being done, and what's the optimal method for delivering the work. So, it does vary.
And when you have a, when you have people who have been selected to be on the list or have been approved to be on the list, I would say, is there a natural rotation that occurs to provide the work across the board for people who are on the list? Or is that how it works?
That's typically how it works, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Y'all set? Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Hi, Ms. Whitehead. Thank you so much for the list. It is very helpful to track what's going on this summer. And being that I'm very familiar with the process of construction, I'm praying for good weather this summer to help us move along. One of the things that I was gonna talk about, but Curtis Valentine brought it up already, the Surrattsville High School ban, ban room. And I understand the unforeseen conditions that we uncovered with the contamination and with the offer to make their current accommodations, since it appears that they will be there a little longer, a little bit more appealing to them. I just wanted to suggest that we really get their input and include not only the principal, but the band director in that conversation to make sure that we can, you know, take care of the issues of storage and helping them to just make their temporary space a little bit more accommodating to their space. But I think it's very important that we include them a little better in the conversation, because there was a lot of, I guess, a lack of communication over the last 10 years. And as I began to investigate, there was, there were things going on, but it just wasn't shared fully. So, you know, and it's understandable what had happened and what you uncovered and the process that you have to take, especially since you have the EPA involved, the environmental, Maryland environment involved. It's a longer process and more reporting and all of that that will hold up the process. And so, from someone who understands it and has gone through it, it's easier for me to understand it than a layperson. So, we just have to try to communicate that better with the community, so. But I do appreciate what it is that you all are about to undertake this summer to get our schools ready. And I just pray for good weather, so thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all set, Ms. Williams? Thank you. Ms. Boston.
I have a question about Fairmont Heights. I didn't see it on here. And we haven't gotten any updates on the construction or when the construction is actually gonna begin on Fairmont Heights. And I've asked for some updates, and I just haven't seen anything listed.
Okay. Well, the first part of it, which is site-related work, is actually being bid right now out on the street. And bids are expected to be received, I think, the second week of July for that first part of the work. And the rest of the project is getting finalized through the permitting stages and so on, and will be bid a little bit later in the fall. But because the permitting and some of the land issues have taken a little bit longer than anticipated, we decided to go ahead and pull site work out and get started on that so that we're not losing time on the schedule.
So, what is the projected, if you know right now, the projected time for the groundbreaking? Because I thought, if I'm not mistaken, this project has been ongoing now for about a couple of years, and we haven't had groundbreaking yet.
Well, the groundbreaking as a ceremony, I think we have some flexibility on. But later this fall, we'll start the building construction in earnest. And so, I would think, you know, towards the end of the fall would be a good time to plan on that. The occupancy date is really two years from this August.
Two years?
Yes.
What is taking so long with this one? Because I know it didn't take that long with Oxon Hill. It don't seem like it took that long. But for some reason, Fairmont Heights has been taking a very long time.
Because it's a new site. The consolidation of the sites has taken some time, the legal aspects of that. And I don't know, Rupert, if you have more to add on that, a little more history.
Good evening, board members. The big difference is Oxon Hill is a replacement school on the same site. So, most of the infrastructure, the site work, all those things, it's much easier. And Fairmont Heights, we had to go through two major site acquisitions. First acquisition, the Maryland National Park Complying Commission site for 29 acres. Then, a second acquisition for three additional sites, that's to build Fairmont Heights for 20-something acres. So, that process was very long-going, a lot of legal work, a lot of correspondences, a lot of submissions with county and other members to get that process approved and funded. And also, we had to fund the additional site acquisitions to build Fairmont Heights. So, it was very, so it took a longer process, to be honest with you. And as Sarah's pointed out too, the permit process also, because of two major site acquisitions, and you have all these legal barriers and buffers and things like that, landscape agreements. There's a lot of pieces in between that the permit office, we have to satisfy their requirements. And so, we're working with our local partners, our legal representatives here with the board, and to resolve all those issues. And we're just about close enough to wrap that up. So, as Sarah said, we pulled out the site work to start the process, and hopefully by the building would start in the fall. And that's our hope, to have it, you know, construction in the ground this, in 2014.
Well, I just hope that you will keep the board and the community updated on this, because there is a lot of conversation out in the community, why is it taking so long? So, I think we need to start having maybe community meetings so we can update the community, so they can understand why this process is taking much longer than the other projects, you know. It's just a lot of talk, and they're just afraid that this project is just being pushed aside. Because I know the funding was approved, I think, sometime last year. I think it was fully funded for this project. So, the public knows that, so we probably need to be able, you know, start to have those meetings so we can actually keep the community updated.
Right. So, it's fully funded by the state, but it's still additional funding from the county government is in the CIP and for the additional funding years. But it's on the schedule. And with this one point, we did have the community meeting with the Alumni Association. We met with them twice, and we briefed them on the project. And so, we'll be happy to again at some point.
Right. Because they were told that it's supposed to happen sometime in October, November, so, you know, when we actually start, you know. So, I'm hearing right now that it might not even gonna happen then, and it's gonna be pushed back a little even further than that, so I'm not sure.
I think what Sarah said is that what we will do, and I think as we go through our first bid, which is gonna be open in the next couple of days for the site work, we'll have a better plan to say how long that's gonna take. We're doing it parallel, two things parallel, getting the final permit to build the building and also do the site work. So, I do believe that in next couple of weeks, we'll have a better idea from DEPI, the permit office, of the approval of the final building permit. And I think that's our hope. So, once we have that, we can bid the project and still continue with the site work. We don't have to stop.
Okay. So, just continue to keep us updated at this aspect.
We will, and we'll plan a groundbreaking for the fall, too.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get a date to you.
Thank you. Ms. Eubanks.
I'm sitting over here smiling. Thank you, Ms. Boston, because that's exactly what I was getting ready to talk about. I was gonna ask you about, because I'm really glad and everyone was happy, because we had them come out and they spoke to the Fairmont community. And it really put a lot of their fears to rest. But people wanna try a lot of times to make things that are not. You know, try to make it seem like we're trying to do something that we're really not. But I wanted to ask you about the permitting process, because the last time you came to Fairmont, you were talking about, you know, you explained to them what happened, the step-by-step process and the CIP. And I wanted to find out, where are we with the permitting process with that? And as well, if we can now maybe plan to have you come back out and update them on back-to-school night? That would be a good time for you to be there if your schedules.
So, I'll answer the second question first. Sure, we'd be happy to be there. And again, Rupert's been the lead person on the permit, so.
Okay.
So, once again, yes, we met a couple of months ago, and we briefed you and the Alumni Association on the permit status. This project, going back to my earlier comment on the site acquisitions, that's the biggest piece on this project. We have two contiguous sites that require, two different, one is developed, one is park-complying. We acquire both sites. And to build that property, to build that school, we had to go through many things. Site utility relocation, and currently, we have a landscape buffer agreement. That's new. It's different. It's not the same for every capital project. That process takes a long time. We're working with Mr. Fisher's office, and that's one of the final pieces that has to be resolved. And that document, I understand, is now in the CEO's office for signature, a landscape agreement. Once that's finalized and ratified and signed, that'd give us a closer, in the application process, one more piece to submit to the DEPI office. But in this project, there were many, many, many different pieces to get a permit for that project.
Exactly. And I want to commend you again, because you really took your time and you explained it. But a lot of people want to, they wanna make something negative that's not negative. And you went through that that day, and you really explained it. I just wanted to make sure that that was put out there. But you also let them know that you were hoping that the groundbreaking would be this fall. So, right now, that is still what we're looking at.
Yes, yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay. I just wanted for the record, right now, that's what. And then if there's a change, we'll know, because we'll have you come back for back-to-school night. And you can update us then. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you very much. I guess I'm just trying to understand, if I could go back to the High Point High School feasibility study for a minute?
So, and before I do that, I wanna echo the comments made by my colleagues about how valuable the work that you, Ms. Woodhead, your staff, Mr. Stukes, Mr. Goldson, and I thank Dr. Maxwell for his leadership in this area. What's happening at CIP and the attention to these longstanding problems is very, very valuable and important to the community. So, thank you for your responsiveness. Thank you. So, the High Point feasibility, so what are we voting on tonight? Because it's on the agenda as 10.8. So, are we, what are we voting on when we vote for this? You're voting to accept the recommendation that when High Point is modernized, it would be modernized with a replacement, with an allowance for keeping the existing auditorium. That's basically what the vote would be on. You're choosing the option that delineates primarily a new building with the potential to keep the existing auditorium, you know, at a certain cost, at a certain size, but accepting that the study is valid. Okay, okay. And then, if you move up on, and 10.5, the capital improvement program has High Point at number three. So, then will we also be voting for that, in fact, High Point is gonna get a new building and will be the next building out of the? No, the number three option isn't the modernization. Rupert, can you pull that out for me? It's the FY15 CIP, not a future CIP. So, can you pull out the priority page? What does SEI mean? That's the Special Education Initiative. Ah, okay. So, people may recall that the feasibility study was put into our capital budget last year after the school board had approved it, but by the county. So, we had High Point on the track of having a special education initiative, a secondary school reform project, and also some systemic work. So, we were on the track of really working to fix High Point consistent with our other sort of component projects. Okay. So, I'm sorry? No, it's okay. So, that's still in there, because this is the FY15 capital budget. I will say that we're thinking that if the school board accepts the recommendation of the administration that when High Point does have its turn for comprehensive improvement, it would be a replacement, then we may want to revisit those and come back to the board in the fall with a recommendation for which of those projects should proceed and which ones we might wanna pull back and think about in a different way. Okay, all right. But we're trying to take this one step at a time. Because whatever money we spend incrementally will be reduced from the state money allocation for the replacement. That's correct. Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay, colleagues, I think that, that concludes. I don't see anyone else in the queue waiting for comment. Thank you so much for that presentation. That concludes our CIP summer work group. And we're now moving on to item seven point oh, our consent agenda. And I will yield the floor to items, to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items seven point one through seven point four under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Item seven point one through seven point four are before the board for approval of renewal of the charter school agreements for Turning Point Academy, Imagine Leland, Imagine Andrews, and the naming of the new Hyattsville area elementary school as the Edward M. Felgey Elementary School.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve? I'm going to break these up slightly because our student board member cannot vote on items seven point one through seven point three. So I will entertain a separate motion for, to approve items seven point one through seven point three under the consent agenda.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to approve these items, seven point one through seven point three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. May I have a motion to approve item seven point four under the consent agenda?
Doc, Dr. Eubanks, I'd like to make a motion that we accept consent agenda item seven point four, naming of the new Hyattsville Elementary School, the Edward M. Felgey Elementary School, with pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. It has been moved and seconded to accept item seven point four under the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Are you, you, Ms. Waller?
Yes, thank you so much. Certainly, this is an exciting event as we go forth with the opening and the naming of our new school in Hyattsville. After Mr. Edward M. Felgey, it was my pleasure to have an opportunity to meet him. And down through the years, I was able to accompany many of our Prince George's students down to the Kennedy Center with the program that still bears his name. I talked to several persons that knew him. I met him, but there were people that actually worked with him, that knew him, and that, I know we have some administrators now that came up during the era of the time when he was with our school system. He believed in educating the whole child, including the arts. He was an arts advocate, and he collected arts. And certainly, I am grateful for the legacy that he's left, and I'm excited that as we prepare to open our new school in Hyattsville this fall, we're going to continue to carry on that great legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. We are now going to move on to item eight point oh, the budget consent agenda. I will now yield the floor for an introduction for items eight point one through eight point six under the budget consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items eight point one through eight point six are before the board for approval of the July and August 2014 expenditure requirements, additional funding for the high, the Crossland High School auditorium, and auditorium addition, ratifications of contractual amendments for local twenty-two fifty contract, and ratification of compensation improvements for local four hundred contract, and appropriation reassignments over one hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. For, and Dr. Anderson?
I was going to move.
Oh, okay. They jumped on you. Ms. Jacobs?
I'll ask her on budget. It's fine.
Okay.
I missed mine.
Mr. Burrows?
Call the question.
All right, let me see if I can do this then. A reminder for folks that the student member cannot vote on a budget consent agenda item. It has been properly moved and seconded to approve items eight point one through eight point six under the budget consent agenda. Ms. Berkley, Ms. Berkley, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Dr. Kaufman?
Aye.
Ms. Mundie?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
The count is eleven ayes, two absent.
All right, thank you. Mr. Valentine, you care to record your vote?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much. There are no items under the non-consent agenda this evening, so we move on to ten point oh governance, unfinished business, second readers. Colleagues, because several of these items the student member cannot vote on, so I want to break them up a little bit. So I want Dr. Maxwell, for you to introduce all the items under ten point oh, except ten point one, ten point seven, and ten point eight. We'll take those separately since the student, I'm sorry, those are the ones the student member can vote on, so the other ones, the student member cannot vote on.
Ten point one, ten point?
Ten point one, ten point seven, ten point eight, we'll take separately.
Which ones would you like first, sir?
All the, we'll do all the other ones first.
The other ones?
Yes.
So items ten point two through ten point six?
Ten point two.
And ten point nine?
That is correct.
Are before the board for the adopt, textbook adoption for early learning programs, additional services for renovations at Glen Arden Woods Elementary School, final acceptance and payment for renovations at Central High School, capital improvement program funding for fiscal year 2015, budget, and adoption of fiscal fifteen operating budget, reconciliation, adoption of fifteen operating budget, and the type two program with Kennedy Krieger Institute.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, may I have a motion to accept items ten point three, ten point two to ten point six and ten point nine? May I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Epps?
So in light of Ms. Woodhead's presentation and colleague Higgins' question and her answer, I'm trying to understand if, so if we vote yes on the capital improvement program and we also vote yes on the feasibility study, which I wholeheartedly encourage my colleagues to do, that won't preclude meeting any needs, you know, environmental needs or leaking or anything like that that needs to be addressed during, you know, and as we move, until we get to the point at which High Point will be addressed.
So it doesn't necessarily preclude it, but there are rules about the capital improvement funding, so anything within a certain period of time, and I think it's fifteen years? I'm looking for somebody to shake their head. Yes, I got it, but I just want to make sure it's fifteen. So there's a look back by the state, so when they approve funding?
Right.
Anything, what? Sixteen years.
Sixteen years, okay.
Anything done within sixteen years that's paid for with state money?
Right.
If they then approve a replacement of the building or a modernization of building?
Then that's.
They won't pay for that work twice.
Right, I did that.
So if we, if we need a whole new roof, for example, and the state pays for it versus what we pay for, then when they approve that, should it be done in ten years, they'll deduct what they've already invested in that program, and we'll have to pick that up locally. So if we haven't already paid for it locally, they won't. So that's the only caveat that I would, you know, put into whether there's an exclusion or not. If it's something that we need to do, we can do with local funds, and it won't have any effect on the funding, there will be an effect on the funding if we have to use state funds, you know, for something during that period of time.
So I would just ask that as we do, you know, as we address issues, because, trust me, we're going to have to address issues at High Point during the fourteen, fifteen school year and, you know, until they come up for, you know, for their time for renovation, full renovation of the, what we're going to be approving tonight, just speaking that. But that, you know, number one, that there's great communication about how to move that forward, particularly with the feasibility study committee and the members of the community that work so hard on this. And, you know, and that we do it in a way that doesn't reduce the, what the state can contribute on the bigger project.
Correct.
That's, I just want to put, you know, go on record as voice in that as a concern.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jacobs?
I didn't know.
You didn't buzz in?
Oh, well, so I'm lost at where we are based on the breakdown, but my questions are...
We're on ten point two through ten point six and ten point nine.
Okay, like, I get that part. Well, let me ask this question. I did have one on ten point two. Is the new early program, which I got to see exhibited at the Common Core ceremony, is that for all early childhood programs? So is it the specialty programs and comprehensive, I guess, for the fraud?
Yes.
It's for all of them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that was that one. We're not doing ten point six, right?
We are.
Okay. My question on, my questions on the budget were, for special education services, I know there were some shifts relative to that, and there was an increase in costs. Does that increase, is that increase solely on the, on the locals? You know how the state gives us a sixty, forty, I think it is, percentage for our services? Is that, is all, are all these costs on the local district?
They are transfers. We, you know, the, the state and the federal government both give us money towards special education. Funding beyond that, we have always picked up, and this is funding beyond that.
This is beyond that? Is that, that's?
Yes, so this is local money being transferred.
So it's, it's, we got a spike in the non-public placement.
Non-public has exceeded what we thought that it was going to do, and so we're making that adjustment so that we can balance by category.
Okay, and then, this question I think is a follow-up, and I just wanted to ask it anyway, in terms of the, you know, what is our systemic process for review of the non-public placement sites to, you know, do a review to determine, yes, this is a good site, we should continue to have for students each year?
So, so the state has approved sites, first of all, and then, secondly, when parents, when there's a determination that they need a non-public site, then they are offered approved sites to go visit and take a look at and see which ones of them work out. And then, you know, there's an assignment made. All of them pretty much cost more than doing it in-house. But, I mean, that's pretty much the process.
Okay, so we basically just go with what, what's on the approved list? We don't have any internal process for review?
Correct. And actually, Kennedy Krieger is an attempt on our part to bring some of those programs locally to us. It will save us some money in transportation, and when we work out the arrangement with them to use our facilities, they should probably discount it a little bit. I mean, it's not going to, you know, it's not going to change the outcome with the number of kids we're talking about and everything, but, you know, it's certainly going to be a help.
Yeah, I know, we've been trying for years to do the Kennedy Krieger process, so I'm very pleased to see that happen. That's great. And then my last question is, again, probably a follow-up, but I'm actually interested, you know, the District of Columbia is doing some review of their special education, which is much needed if you know what their process is. But it made me wonder how compliant we are with the mandated five-day rule in terms of getting reports to parents ahead of time of their IEPs. So I guess, as a follow-up, I'd like to know what kind of deficiencies we have internally, you know, how consistent are we across the system? And then what are some of the reasons that we're not meeting the five, the mandated five-day rule?
Well, we can follow up on that.
My other question relative to the budget, what was the, what was the amount for, I know what we have in the chart, but what's the amount from last year of the exact county maintenance of effort amount required by law for the budget cycle? What was the?
For FY 2014 or for 2015?
So with MOE requiring that you do what you're supposed to do based on previous enrollment, I mean, previous budget, my question is, what was the county legally required to pay the district for maintenance of effort period? Not anything above and beyond. What was their obligation under the law for maintenance of effort?
Two million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and forty?
I'm sorry?
Two million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars.
That was the increase?
That was the amount over maintenance of effort.
So the, so are you saying the county funded us above maintenance of effort for the, for the budget we're about to approve tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Tonight?
Yes.
Right, just making sure, because I heard you talk about two years.
Right.
And the amount was two million something or other?
Yes.
So they went above maintenance of effort? And was it, is it two million one-time cost?
Within that two million, one point four of that two million is one-time cost.
So next year, it should be what we got this year, and then give or take a half million more?
Correct.
Because it's not one-time cost? Okay.
Plus there'll be, they'll have to calculate the increase in students.
Correct. So, right, that plus the increase. I thought that was just their state's requirement, it's not? It's both?
It's both.
Okay. And then the other piece was, actually kind of goes to that, so this is more of a follow-up going forward in terms of tracking the budget, and that is that student enrollment data and the wealth calculation data based on the new, based on the improvements in the law finally around net taxable income in terms of how we, in other words, what I'd like to be able to see is, you know, this is maintenance of effort, this is how the state give us the, the, their portion based on the wealth calculation and the student enrollment data, but at the same time, how does NTI play into that? Like, like, I'd like to see it not lumped all in, but separated so we can actually see, because we've been telling constituents for years now that we've been missing funds based on net taxable income, and now that it's starting to phase in, I'd like for the, for the community to be able to see, this is exactly what we're talking about.
We should, we should be able to do that by the time we're presenting revenue in the fall at the budget conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Ms., I didn't see, I, I was waiting for you, Becky, okay? Ms. Higgins?
Thank you very much. I'm going to be very pleased to vote for this budget. I think the work that Dr. Maxwell and his staff have done is very valuable in terms of helping move us forward as a system, so I appreciate that. I have, particularly the, the pre-K expansion and what that will do for our students, as well as the elementary school counselors throughout the system will be able to also help with the special education requirements. It's wonderful to have the approved contracts from all the unions and be able to start giving our employees some of the salary benefits that will help keep us competitive. I do have a few questions on the changes that were presented. One has to do in terms of understanding a little more about the international school expenses. So could we talk a little bit about what that is? It's one point four million dollars for the international school.
So, so we've applied for a grant that we hope to be hearing about soon from the Carnegie Foundation for about three million dollars over the next few years. And it will, you know, grants don't usually cover everything, you know, we have, we have to put some, some, some money up into things, and we're going to have to identify, you know, some sites and provide some, some, some of the funding for that program. We certainly know that we have some deficits in our second language learning community when it comes to graduation rates and, and success rates. There have been a number of site visits over the last couple of years to New York to visit the international schools program. to visit the International Schools Program in New York. Uh, and there was a visit again, uh, this year, uh, that included some members, uh, of the community and, and us. And, uh, CASA, uh, has been a really great, great partner with us in this, in this project. So the one point four million dollars represents our part of the planning and development of two schools, uh, pending, again, the funding of the grant, the receipt of the grant.
So this is planning in what part?
So the first part is gonna be, uh, yes, a planning phase, and that will, I think we have all next year to get that planning done. And so this represents, uh, you know, money that will lay the groundwork, uh, should there be, I mean, there's a number of things that could happen. We'll, we'll have some money from Carnegie and then us, but again, we're not quite a hundred percent sure whether we're gonna get the full funding from Carnegie or any funding. I mean, they have to make a, you know, a final determination, which again, we're expecting in the next, you know, couple of weeks. Uh, but we are, again, we're gonna have to identify sites, and there may be some costs to those sites. We're gonna have to, we usually hire, as, as you're aware, principals in advance of the start of a school so that they can begin hiring staff and ordering supplies and materials and those kinda things. Again, there could be some upfront costs to acquisition of sites. You know, again, whether we go with sites that we have and a re, a realignment of some things, or whether we have space within other, uh, facilities to do a school within a school project. I mean, that, that's the kinda planning work that has to done, and there will be costs associated with it.
So this, the seven FTEs are...
Seven FTEs are going to be, I think, a, two, there's two principals, there's two schools, and then some support staff for both the planning process and the start of the school, like a secretary. And do you know what those are, Seeta? Dr. Narcisse?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be hiring two principals and project leaders, school, they call them school design leaders, who will turn into principals in the third year. So this upcoming year will be...
Principals, project design leaders.
School design leaders.
School design leaders.
So, um, so the one point four million dollars is, is, are, are we determining, so our ongoing commitment as PGCPs will be how much? And is it based on student enrollment, or how, how much is our financial allocation?
Each of those schools is designed for a certain size. Those students get a certain amount of, you know, per, per student, um, you know, allocations. Obviously, money sort of follows kids, so if you're, if you have, uh, kids, and again, sort of the reallocation is the issue. If you could cleanly move enough students to justify one teacher from one school into the new school, then you have a one-on-one trade. But if you get students who end up in a school where it doesn't create a one-to-one, then you have to add staff to make up the difference of that, much like we do with, uh, charter schools and some of the additional allocations that we do for specialty schools, and this will be exactly the same way.
So they follow the same charter school process in terms of evaluation of their curriculum?
So, no, not exactly. These, this is really a contract arrangement through the Carnegie Foundation with the International Schools Organization. So there's a, there, there, it's not exactly the same, uh, charter. It's not a charter like we're chartering that organization there. We're actually contracting with them to run the schools. Is that fair?
To help design the school, it's, it's actually gonna be our own public school, so we, we'll be a part of all the whole process.
So the contract is to design, establish, and set up. That's what the grant from Carnegie is, and then it will be ours to run after we get it up and running.
PGCPs?
Absolutely.
So all the students who will attend that school are eligible for PGS? Um, they're our students. They're eligible for our school.
Absolutely. There's students that we currently have in other places.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then, um, I wanted to ask about the summer school program. Can you talk a little bit more about the youth jobs program?
The jobs program?
Mm-hmm.
We've had a jobs program. I'm not sure who else can talk to that, but we've been hiring, uh, students for, I don't know, thirty years, I think, to work in the warehouse and other places in the school district, uh, over the summer to help us get work done. Warehouse deliveries, for example, at the start of school, moving furniture out when we're doing some of the site work that we're, I mean, uh, construction work that we're doing over the summer, moving, moving things around for us. We've always hired, you know, summer, summer jobs.
So that's been through PGCPs and not through the county?
No, I think it's been our money. Is that correct?
It's, it's, it's our money.
Our money.
Yes, it's our money. We hire for the summer youth employment program. We hire students to do some additional work in our facilities.
Uh, one point five million dollars? It's, it's in like this current year's budget? As opposed to fiscal, I, I'd be interested, I, I mean, I wasn't aware of that, um, that we have in fiscal year fourteen, um, jobs program for students for last summer.
So this is in an effort to actually increase the number of students...
I'm sorry, what?
So this is in an effort to actually increase the number of students that are participating in that program. Um, in conjunction with the, the county, we were trying to expand the opportunities for our students within the school district. So we've had the program for, for years. This is to ramp it up so that we can employ more youth throughout the summer.
So what was our budget amount last summer?
I wanna say it was, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand, but I would have to get that information back to you to keep you...
So about double then?
Yes. It'll be double this year.
Yeah. I, I mean, obviously, if we can help kids stay active and earn money and jobs, there's, there's really positive to that, and, and I understand that. I guess, I, I'm thinking in terms of our core mission about educating and maybe taking that seven hundred and fifty thousand and helping summer bridge programs, kids we wanna make sure are successful in ninth grade, or the double basics, um, those kids who can't read and are struggling in math and reading, or the, you know, forty-five hundred third graders we have who are struggling that, um, looking to, I mean, I'm certainly gonna support the budget, et cetera, but, uh, wonder if, um, a tailored down jobs program for, for next year, this might be something that would be more of a county initiative. Now, I understand the county executive has a lot of financial issues that are happening right now, but, um, I, I would look to, um, to support more academic, uh, summer programs that would help our kids when they, when the fall starts. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Valentine?
Thank you. Um, something my colleague, Ms. Higgins, um, brought up about the, um, ELL, uh, grant, uh, where are we in the process of selecting a, a location, um, regard to where that would be? I know there was talk about some, some school that had swing space or a new space, but I guess, I was curious where we are with that.
We're pretty much in the same place we were the last time we heard about it. We've had some conversations, but until we get the grant and pass the budget, you know, we're, we're not in the full planning stage yet. We've had just some very preliminary conversations. Uh, we're interested in finding at least one that would be, you know, really close to or in the Langley Park area where a lot of our international students reside. We, uh, are very open, however, to one, you know, outside of that area for sure. We just, again, we have to, we can have that desire, we have to be able to find a space, and that's the, that's the reality of, of the, of the planning, so...
So, so what is the timing of the, the grant? When we...
It's a three-year grant, and the first year, as soon as we get it, I mean, it would be effective essentially July one, even if it's not, you know, you don't always receive your money the first of July, but the, this coming fiscal year is the first year of the grant, and the money that we're putting in is, you know, our first, you know, contribution.
But when will we know, when will we know whether we receive the grant? What's the sort of the response?
Within the next couple of weeks, I would expect that Carnegie's gonna make a, an announcement at which districts they're funding and, and to what degree. So, I mean, I, I actually thought I'd see it by the first of July, but I'm sitting here on the twenty-sixth, and I, and I don't have, uh, their, their, uh, public announcement.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Jacobs?
So I know it's late and everybody wants to go home. Um, it is part of our fiduciary duty, though, to, to, to assess the budget. So I just had two things based on comments I've heard from colleagues, and so when you do the fall role, uh, the fall updates, could you give us an accounting of the county, of the jobs that were, um, provided to our youth and where they were placed? So, um, you know, how many are placed in actual school system sites, and how many were actually placed in county agencies?
I don't think we're, are we placing any of them in county? I think they were all here.
It's in, in PGCPs.
In PGCPs. Our students are working for PGCPs.
Okay.
The county has an overall initiative for how many summer jobs they wanna provide. We're providing a certain number, and we've always provided a certain number.
So there would be, so some of the students that might normally would be at county agencies might actually be in our, our, um, our...
No, I think there's still gonna be a county agency. I don't think I'm picking up any...
No, I know they have it, but I'm just saying, I mean, I, I've seen the summer program in the county for twenty-three years.
We make every effort to put our students that we, that we put through our process in school system facilities. The county may have, you know, another process that they use to place youth, uh, in county agencies, but...
And they've been doing some job training, uh, on weekends using some of our high schools for, for sites for job training, just as a, you know, trying to, to, again, I know to, to Ms. Higgins, you know, comment about, you know, learning. These kids are learning about employment practices and good work behavior and those kinda things, and that is an important part of the process. And they've been using our sites since February-ish, uh, about ten? Two, two of our high schools, uh, for a number of weeks for training for the students, both for the ones that are gonna work for us and for the ones that are gonna work in private industry and county. I think we've been hosting it for all of them. But the students that we are paying for are working for us.
Okay, so then it would just be an opportunity to show how we were able to pro, provide the increase for students then?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other final one I think I have was, um, so there's been so much talk about the international school, if I'm saying that correctly? And, you know, I don't know the details, I just know that there was some discussion about, um, the NAACP's position on, um, our, our, on the school district taking this on. So I would also suggest that as we move forward to prevent, if possible, any, um, any issues that may arise as a result of not communicating or not, not intentionally, but, um, you know, that, that we reach out to the NAACP and get their concerns if they have any, and any, uh, suggestions or recommendations that they might have just from our perspective.
So there's been, there's already been at least one, maybe two meetings, and there's been some visits to some of our schools with both...
Yeah, we've, we've actually been working together with, communicating with the NAACP and CASA de Maryland and going through the process right now to kind of give the whole story around the work we're doing with the international schools.
And there's another meeting on the calendar, uh, for Dr. Narcisse, Maritza CASA, NAACP, and myself.
That's correct.
I, I appreciate that. There's so many conversations that happens, believe it or not, at, um, at polls. You just have to follow up on them, and that was one of them that we, I was asked about and didn't have all the answers to. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I see, uh, no other, uh, lights on for comments, so I think we are all set to vote. So, uh, Mrs. Berkeley, would you please call the roll for approval of second read of items ten point two through ten point six and ten point nine? Again, the student member cannot vote on these items.
Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Ubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Dr. Kaufman? Ms. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Ubanks?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you. That, uh, motion carries. Um, we will now... One, right, okay. Dr. Maxwell? Please introduce items ten point one, ten point seven, and ten point eight.
Thank you, Dr. Ubanks. I, I wanna also notice I introduced those. I'm so happy that, uh, Jamie's here from the Gazette to report the unanimous passing of my first, uh, uh, annual operating budget and, and capital, uh, budget of, of my tenure as CEO in, in French Georgia's County. Thanks for your great coverage, Jamie. So, um, item ten point one is the adoption of the Board of Education, uh, calendar for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year, and the approval of the fiscal year two thousand fifteen educational facilities master plan, and the approval of the High Point High School feasibility study.
May I have a motion to accept items ten point one, ten point seven, and ten point eight?
Second?
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Epps?
I simply wanna offer a final appeal to my colleagues who vote, uh, yea on ten point eight approval of High Point High School feasibility study.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mrs. Berkeley, may you please call the roll, and of course, our student member can vote on this one.
Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Ubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Dr. Kaufman? Ms. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Muse Ariel?
Aye.
Ms. Boston? Dr. Ubanks?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes item ten, uh, point oh. We now move to item eleven point oh, new business first readers. Uh, Dr. Maxwell, would you please introduce item eleven point one?
Thank you, Dr. Ubanks. Item eleven point one, board policy five-one-one-five, student appeals as extended suspensions and expulsions before the board as a first reader, and no discussion is required.
May I, colleagues, uh, may I please have a motion to accept item eleven point one under new business first readers? It has been moved and seconded. Uh, there's no discussion required for, uh, first, uh, for first reader items. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? That motion carries. We have done public comment on non-agenda items. We're on to, um, thirteen point oh, emergency item, uh, board policy five-one-three-two, cell phones and other electronic devices in schools. Uh, I will yield the floor to an, for introduction. Dr. Maxwell?
Thank you, Dr. Ubanks. You did an excellent job introducing it, actually, except to say that the reason it's on as a first reader, uh, is that we would like to, uh, you know, be able to incorporate the policy in our student, uh, handbook, which obviously we, I'm sorry, uh, as an emergency item, my, my apologies for misspeaking. Uh, as an emergency item is to be able to incorporate the policy into our, uh, student handbook, which will be published over the summer to be ready for the opening of school.
Thank you. And colleagues, before we, uh, open for discussion, thank you for that clarity and that, uh, last policy review committee, uh, when we had that discussion, uh, the members there, uh, felt like we could bring that and then, so that principals can be trained and, and folks can be ready, and then if we needed, uh, at some point to do revisions, if necessary, uh, we could do that at the beginning of the year, but we wanted to not slow down the process, so that was our thinking. Uh, I see some folks for comments, but just to make sure I get a motion on the floor, let me first start by having a motion on the floor to approve item thirteen point one. I gotta approve it before I can call on you guys to speak on the motion. I have, I need a motion. Is that, okay. May I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. I have, uh, Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, um, Dr. Ubanks. So, um, you know, as I was looking at the policy and realizing and, and being reminded of the, um, international attention that we got from having a cell, a change in the cellphone policy in this district, um, it was a collaborative effort that included, um, our labor partners. And so to the extent that this is being treated as an emergency, um, if, if they're so inclined, I would say that, you know, and I understand the reasons behind it because we did discuss it, but because the people on the front line who have to do the implementation, um, need to be trained and need more information, I, I don't recall that, you know, we just went I don't recall that, you know, we just went through the policy process, but I don't recall that there was a process that actually had separate meetings with the labor to determine what their inputs were. And so I would, I would, I would support the passing of this as long as it's open for amendments based on feedback that we get from, from labor.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I think my partners at PGCA, for example, I think were busy with ratification processes today and weren't able to attend the all-union meeting that we had this morning. But I'm happy to sit down with them and talk through whatever, you know, concerns or issues they may have as we have done with a lot of things this year. Again, I just don't want to be in a position where we have schools starting and people aren't aware or sure of what the policy is or isn't.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And with that, I can support it.
Thank you, Ms. Monday.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. After reading the policy, I agree with the content as it is. There are just a few things that I would make some recommendations on for clarity that are more editorial, that I think would lead to better understanding. So for example, under item B, approve use of PD, PEDs in school. Then there's a bulleted list, a number, numerical bulleted list. The third one says if students are not permitted to use PEDs in class or at any other times, the PEDs must be turned off. And so that doesn't really speak to a bullet list of the uses based on that subheading. So again, it's more editorial about how we can make the content a little bit more clear and to flow a little bit more, more direct. So going back to what Ms. Jacobs said, there may be some opportunities to kind of tighten up language and just kind of move around some things or be a little bit more clear in what we're trying to express, more succinct and direct. But I don't have an issue with the policy as it stands. I will, will vote for it tonight or try to, with some amendments, suggest its amendments if we have an opportunity to. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
I certainly am in favor of the points that Ms. Jacobs made regarding this policy and certainly am in favor of it. But I'm also concerned about possible health hazards associated with the use of cell phones and other electronic devices. So I would suggest that we research this piece carefully and possibly make cautionary statements to our students regarding the use of electronic devices. Particularly interested in the comments made tonight in one of, by one of the speakers.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to say that I had shown this policy to some administrators, vice principals and principals who, particularly in the middle school and high school, can't wait to get this fast enough to be able to have the flexibility. So I appreciate my other colleagues' comments in terms of being inclusive and making sure we tighten it up and that the language and we address health issues. But I'm, will also be very strongly supporting this policy.
Thank you. I put myself on a queue. And for those who worked in, on the Policy Review Committee for this, there are some real tough and important decisions made. And I couldn't agree more about our need to continue to expand that circle with our labor colleagues and with the folks who will be implementing this to make sure that we get this tightened up. But I also would hate to see us not be really crystal clear about the fact that we actually are moving into the modern era with these devices and ready to use them in ways that are productive and meaningful and safe in schools. So I too will be supporting this with that clear caveat that we will be engaged in these conversations and making whatever modifications and tweaks that we need to make as we move forward. And Mr. Burrows, you're next. Ms. Jacobs?
Just one other thing, in light of what Dr. Anderson just said too, I, I agree. So, you know, the cellphone and cell tower discussion has, you know, made me think, kind of think about battle of the experts. And, you know, in a courtroom, you really pick and choose which side, who's most credible or who sounds most credible. So I would ask the administration, and it could be documents, if you could also provide us the other view, if you will, so that we can have both sides. I mean, we've gotten this information before. When the Board originally approved to even have a discussion about cellphone towers, we got information from the administration that, that indicated, you know, there was not as much health hazard. But in light of what seems to be an increased view of that, if we could get another report from the administration that's, that, from your perspective, that you're fine, that this decision is the right one relative to other reports that are out there.
We, we can do that. All right, I see no other lights up for comments. Am I clear? We have no more comments, correct? Okay, thank you very much. We've moved and seconded and had our discussion. Ms. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Dr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Dr. Kaufman?
Aye.
Ms. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Muse Ariel?
Aye.
Ms. Boston? Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Unanimous? 14 ayes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. That concludes our, our agenda item on emergency items. Item 14.0, Follow-Up Items, follow-up items for the June 12, 2014 Board Meeting have been placed in Board Docs. Motion to confirm actions taken in executive session. Colleagues may have a motion to confirm actions taken in executive session.
And I never make motions?
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Let me see. Could I possibly get a motion to adjourn? Would that be possible? It has been moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any debate? Hearing absolutely none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Ladies and gentlemen, we adjourn. Folks in the back who were here voluntarily, thank you very much for showing, for, for staying with us.